Good to go.
Thank you, Bryce. All right, we have one item on tonight's agenda, and it is proposed amendments to the FYE 2022 budget. I believe we have a presentation from our finance director, Mr. Anthony Francisco.
Good evening, mayors members of council. Going to attempt to share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This memo was sent out to council earlier this afternoon, but it is basically an compendium of all of the budget amendments that we have heard need for so far. Most of them were discussed at the council finance committee meeting on May the 20th, but I will read through each of them. Mayor, let me know if you want to discuss them individually as I read them, or if you want me to go through and read all of them and then you, you know, kind of discuss them on the whole, so.
Yeah, why don't you give us a high level and then we'll go down one by one.
Very good. The first amendment is to increase the general fund city council budget by $100,000 for membership in the neighborhood alliance. This is something the council had talked about in one of your previous study sessions. The second one is a $30,000 increase to the capital fund for historical markers and signs. This was suggested by at least one member of the public at the public hearings, and then was discussed by council. Number three is increasing the CDBG fund allocations to the property owner rehabilitation program by $13,663. This is just additional money that came in from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number four is decreasing the fire suppression overtime allocations of the general fund by $841,486 and the public safety sales tax fund by $223,199. This is basically just due to some double counting that we did in the expenditure projections, and that $220,109 would decrease would decrease the public safety sales tax fund subsidy by that amount. Number five is increasing the risk management fund allocations by $652,700 for workers' compensation settlement projections. Number six is increasing the capital fund allocations by $5,353,488 for street maintenance bond projects that were approved by the voters on April the 6th. And this is just the first year of allocations of the $13,500,000 of general obligation bond revenue that we just approved, that financing at last council meeting. Number seven is increasing the capital fund allocations by $745,608 to move forward the East Alameda Street project. And this was part of the 2012 general obligation bond issue. Originally, it was to be done in next fiscal year, but we're going to move that project forward by a year, basically because we don't have enough full funds to do the 36th Avenue project. So we're gonna complete this last one of the two remaining 2012 projects in advance. Number eight is decreasing the capital fund allocations by $753,600 for the Vineyard Edition flood control project. This was suggested by Councilmember Patron at your finance committee meeting. And then number nine is increasing the general fund allocations in the city council department budget by $1 million for a pilot participatory budgeting program. And this was suggested by Councilmember Foreman. And as you're going along your discussion tonight, Councilmember Foreman will discuss her proposal there. I will discuss my understanding of how it might be implemented. But again, the language of the actual amendment is fairly simple. It's just the program itself that we'll need to hash through. If there are any questions, I'll try to respond to them. Other than that, we'll turn it back over to you, councilmembers.
Okay, I feel like we've spoken about several of these. Does anyone, Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So on number two, the historical marker signs. I think I understood from former councilmember Carter that there would likely be some private funds raised to do this project. I hope that's the case. And I do want to just state for the record that I do think this is a good idea, but I do want to make sure that historical markers in Norman do reflect the entire history of Norman, including who and what was here before the city of Norman existed. So I think that needs to be recognized. And so I just want to state that for the record here, that that would be my expectation of our contribution to that project would be that we make sure that, you know, that all the history is recognized. And with item number seven, no, number eight, I do just want to make sure I do understand why this is being proposed. I do just want to make sure that the residents or neighbors in the Vineyard neighborhood haven't been expecting this and planning for this and all those types of things, and that we're maybe gonna pull the rug right out from under them at the end here. So just want to maybe get some clarification on where we would be at as far as these funds actually going to the Vineyard addition to fix that problem and where the neighborhood is at as well. So definitely some clarification on that. And I think that's the only, yes, the only two that I really had comments, questions about at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we have, is it Mr. O'Leary perhaps that can help us with Councilmember Holman's questions about item eight?
Sure, Mayor. Happy to. I don't really know much about the origin of the item here, but I can tell you a little bit about the history. Certainly Vineyard Edition is a residential subdivision there off of North Quarter and Ward Six have had lots of flooding there, flooding of homes. I know many of you know previous councilmember Bill Scanlon, who probably is sort of the poster child of damage to his home, about over $200,000 in damage to his home in two particular floods. One was in August of 2007, and the next one was in the May of 2015. But several properties have had the same kinds of damage there. Council in recent years has allocated about $50,000 in capital funds to study the problem and to design the solution. So we now have a set of plans and a design to enlarge the detention basin and to enlarge the downstream pipeline system that we think will resolve most of those problems. But we have no funding for construction. This was one of sixty projects in the stormwater bond program that failed in April of 2019. So one of the directions we received from council and the community after that bond election failure was that we should pursue grant opportunities. So earlier this year, we learned of a grant opportunity through FEMA. It's through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And we floated this project with our FEMA representatives, and they felt like it was a really good candidate. So we have applied for that grant program. The number here shown on the screen, 753,000, is the total cost, but that is a 75-25 grant program. So what we're actually asking for in capital funds is 188,000. That would be matched with 565,000 in federal funds. We think the results of that grant application will be released in the next few months. We're pretty favorable about it. We're getting good feedback. But again, we're competing with many other cities and counties in our region. So not sure. If the grant is not received, the funds will not be spent. If the grant is received, we will need to match it with 25%. Happy to answer any question.
I think my, at least initial thoughts on that would be that it sounds like really good news to me. That's 75%. Match is pretty good. I know we've been pretty critical of some of the 50-50s and other grants where it required us to take over funding for programs in the future. But this one does sound like to me a 75-25 grant. If it's successful, I mean, I feel like I would be okay with 188,000 to address this, what I would consider a significant stormwater problem in Norman. But I do understand that, you know, it is a neighborhood, and I understand some people's feelings that the neighborhood should deal with it themselves. But I think we've discussed a lot of the issues that the neighborhood has had with addressing it themselves. And this may be an opportunity to fix this problem at the lowest cost I've seen so far to the residents, to the city. So anyway, I appreciate the clarification about that one and the update on kind of where we were at on it. So thanks.
Hi, yes. The question I had for number nine, as much as I want some participatory budgeting, I'm curious where this is going to be pulled from to be placed into the general fund. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is I was told that what I was wanting to have is not necessarily an amendment, but rather a resolution to have an appropriation of funds, since we were told at the last budget meeting that the funds for a mobile crisis response team were left in the general funds this year, but it's not allocated or appropriated. I would like to add a resolution for an appropriation for that. So I know that's kind of two parts, but I don't know if Foreman can fill us in on where that fund was coming from to increase the general fund?
It's coming from the general fund. It's not being pulled from any other department. It's just money that's in the general fund that's being allocated into its own budget.
Yes, ma'am. Basically, the difference between the two proposals is the difference between the two fiscal years. Councilmember Studley is talking about funds that are in this year's general fund balance reserved for community outreach. And there were two committees, one of council, one of the public, that discussed things that might be potential uses for those funds. But council has not yet allocated those funds primarily because of the pending lawsuit from the Fraternal Order of Police. But one thing that you might do is to appropriate some of those funds for the program that Councilmember Studley is talking about. Number nine is a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 22 budget, which would basically reduce the general fund balance that is projected as of the end of fiscal year 22. So basically, you would go from a proposed or projected fund balance for about $4,093,000 to about $3,093,000. We'd still have, we'd still meet our mandated operational reserves, at least as they are projected, but you would be cutting it close. So in my understanding of how those funds would be used, would we would just basically have a line item in the city council's budget for a million dollars? And each ward would have one-eighth share of that, $125,000, and have ward meetings or community meetings to decide how they would be used in their ward. That's my understanding of how it could work.
So then let me get some clarification, because I was referring to the year 2022. I know that we had those funds allocated, and then we got to revote on it in April of this year, and we, and the council agreed to keep those funds. I think it was a little over $600,000 for community type work. So I know that we have that somewhere. But last budget meeting on last Tuesday, I specifically asked the question about why in the 2022 fiscal year budget was there not any funds allocated for such a service, for like a mobile crisis response or the community outreach that we've all been talking about? And the answer that you and Mr. Pyle came up with was, well, we left that in the general funds this year. So it didn't go back into the police department's budget. It was left in the general funds. So what my, what my suggestion is, is to take that money that you guys are claiming that you left in the general fund and didn't put back in the police budget for fiscal year 2022, and allocate that part of the budget for a mobile crisis response team, as well as use the additional $600,000 that we have in savings for this specific thing and combine it. So we're looking at going into fiscal year 2022 with 1.2 million to fund a pilot program for a mobile crisis response unit. Does that make sense?
As I understand it, I think you're doing some double counting there, because the funds that are in the general fund balance for fiscal year 21 would carry over into the general fund balance in fiscal year 22. Recall that only council can appropriate fund balance. What you identified that you want to use it for, once you have appropriated it, it's no longer in fund balance, and council cannot appropriate it again. So if you appropriated 1.2 million dollars of general fund balance, in effect, you'd be appropriating $600,000 out of this fiscal year, $600,000 out of next fiscal year. But it's all the same fund balance. It's just that it carried over at the end of this fiscal year.
So the question that I asked last Tuesday then specifically about, is there money set aside for this for the 2022 budget? Then the answer is no, because the money that we took out from 2021 is what you guys are talking about?
We didn't, you did not take the money out in fiscal year 21. It's still there. Recall that the things that were discussed to be done with those reserved funds, council has not appropriated those reserve funds yet. They're still, they are still in reserve. Only council can appropriate fund balance. Only council can appropriate reserved funds.
Right, but that was for 2021. So we're saying that we have a little over $600,000 in a fund being held while council figures out how to appropriate that money from 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And if council, if you could, but you need to understand that if council does not appropriate those funds in fiscal year 21, then they will go into the projected fund balance that's carried over into fiscal year 22. There is no additional funds created. It's just that the reserve on the fund balance has been removed. But only council can appropriate fund balance, no matter what you appropriated for.
Okay, so then for this year, Mr. Pyle did not account for Norman having a mobile crisis response unit and didn't take any money to appropriate anywhere. I specifically asked this question last Tuesday, and the answer was, no, we didn't increase the police budget by that money, but we left it in the general fund so that you guys can figure out what to do with it. But it wasn't appropriated specifically for anything. So then now, just for clarification purposes, it's the correct answer is there was nothing appropriated in 2022 for such a thing. It's the money from 2021 that was captured and held in a reserve fund. Is that correct?
The only thing that you need to understand is that you guys, is you. It's the city council. The city council is the only body that can appropriate fund balance.
Correct. I understand that. But what I'm saying is the city manager is the one that proposes the budget. And so last Tuesday, I specifically asked the city manager why there wasn't anything appropriated for a mobile crisis response unit from 2022. And his answer was, I didn't add it back to the police budget. I left it in the general fund. So then to me, that would mean there's an additional 600-something thousand dollars in our general fund that council then gets to appropriate. But Anthony, you're saying that's not the case. You're saying that that money was from 2021, because it hasn't been appropriated. It's gonna roll over into 2022. So we don't have any additional money from 2022 going into anything for community service type stuff.
You have the 600, you have the $600,000 that you had in 21 that will carry over into 22.
And the reason that was not included in the proposed budget is at the time, the proposed budget was sent out to the print shop. The status of the FOP lawsuit and the status of the court case were unknown at the time. We recognize those dollars were set aside in reserve pending the outcome, and then council could take any action council saw fit on how those dollars would get allocated and spent. In the two pieces that added up to 865,000, one of them was the internal audit function of about 235,000, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Francisco. And council's discussion around that hovered around the actions of the Carter Review Committee and whether or not that action would be before the voters to provide for that internal auditor function in time to allocate. And obviously, that wasn't gonna happen before the end of the current fiscal year. So those dollars are available for council to budget and allocate for the upcoming fiscal year, which would be about as fast as we could begin to move on any action council saw as appropriate.
Okay, well then, I would like to propose an additional amendment to have an additional 600 and something thousand to match what we took out from 2021 into fiscal year 2022. And I'd like to see that as part of the budget moving forward for a mobile crisis response unit.
And that is the purpose of this evening's meeting. We're happy to your list.
Thank you.
Question on that, if we move $600,000, does that cut into the million to do participatory budgeting?
Yes, it's coming from the same source.
Okay. Studley, did you get all your questions heard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Was that me, Mayor?
Yeah, come, go ahead, Councilmember Studley.
Sorry, it cut out for a second. Okay. So I guess I'm gonna go through these kind of one by one, but. All right, so I will start with the Vineyard. Okay, just so everyone is clear, I don't have a problem with doing stormwater projects for neighborhoods. What I have a problem with is I have neighborhoods as well where Mr. City Manager, you know full well that Cambridge Place, not my Cambridge, different neighborhood, has been literally underwater, and we have a homeowner in there who is stuck. And more than one, actually. But she has been really communicating with us. And so I want to know what other neighborhoods we apply for, for the FEMA grant.
Studley, I'll try to respond to that. Again, remember, we've got probably 100 stormwater projects in Norman that we'd like to fund. There were 60 of those on the bond program election in 2019. So there's lots and lots of projects in every ward. In fact, in that election, there were three projects targeted in each of the eight wards specifically, because we wanted, each of the councilmen wanted some funding in their wards. So certainly lots of candidates out there. With regard to the Cambridge Place project, just a quick history lesson there again. We have allocated about $500,000, $500,000 to $600,000 in previous years to address that problem. We certainly haven't accomplished it all, I'm happy to admit that. But there, and there's more work to do. So we are actually working on a grant application for that one. Very similar, a little different program. But Dr. Evanson has identified a possible grant source for that. So we're working with our design consultants to put that together. That is a high priority project, because like the Vineyard Edition, we have, occasionally, we have water in homes. This isn't just flooding of the backyards or, you know, common areas. This is actually water that has gotten into some homes there, particularly on Midway Drive. So again, we're pursuing every grant opportunity we can and trying to match those grant announcements to projects in Norman that make sense.
Okay, so respectfully, how many neighborhoods have been applied for outside of the Vineyard?
These are the only two that we are aware of, and the only two that really fit those grant programs. We hope that there are more. There really haven't been a lot of federal or state grant programs in the stormwater area for many years. We're hoping that that improves with some of the federal action and infrastructure programs that are being proposed. But there just really aren't very many opportunities out there to gain significant federal dollars.
Okay, so are you saying that Cambridge Place was applied for already, as well as the Vineyard?
Yes, the Vineyard application is a little bit more advanced. We've been working on that for almost a year, working with that neighborhood for 14 years. Same is true with Midway Drive and Cambridge Place, but that application process is a little bit behind. The other one, it didn't, it wasn't announced until about three months ago. So we think it's a good opportunity. It's really more for this particular grant, it would be for flood warnings. I think that neighbor that you're mentioning was really interested in some advanced signage to prevent people from driving through the neighborhood and moving that floodwater into their homes from the streets. And so we're pursuing an advanced warning system that would mitigate that. We're also actively pursuing some grant, some of the design opportunities to try to address what we think is the, is the source of the current flooding, which is a private stormwater channel located on the north side of Cambridge Place.
Okay, and in the application that you submitted for Midway Drive, have you been in contact with the homeowner to let her know that that application has been submitted?
I believe Dr. Evanson has spoken to that particular owner. We have several that we communicate with. But I think if I'm understanding you, that we have been in contact with that homeowner.
Okay, and how much money do we need to set aside to ensure that that neighborhood is handled as well? Because here's my thing. You have to understand that these homes are a fraction of the cost of the Vineyard homes, and they're older. So it's not a matter of, you know, I guess it is a matter of equity here as to who is getting city dollars, because this is new. For the city to even come forward with 188,000 to pay for a stormwater project outside of a bond is, you know, Senate lakes didn't get offered that. They got engineering. We did, you know, we helped them with those kind of soft costs. But as far as the actual construction of it, and I understand it's cost sharing, we didn't, as a council, to my knowledge, ever, we bought some homes, which may be the answer here with Cambridge Place as well. And I know that that particular homeowner, who is desperate at this point, is begging for the city to buy her house. So maybe that could be an option as well. But I guess my question is, how much do we need to put aside to ensure that Cambridge Place is also taken care of?
I'm sorry, I do not have that handy, Councilmember. I'm happy to forward that to you in the morning when I'm able to match notes with Dr. Evanson. But my understanding is it may have been 100% grant opportunity on that one, and much smaller numbers than the one in Vineyard Edition. It's an advanced warning system. It's not a infrastructure project. There will be more money spent in Cambridge Place. I can promise you that. And there's never been any, any matching. The city has paid 100% of all the previous infrastructure costs in Cambridge Place, which is easily in excess of $600,000. So there will be much more to do there besides this advanced warning system. And I believe that's gonna be the city picking up that bill at some point through some source of funds.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, and it would be at this point. So lately, raise all kinds of hell, we need to put aside the 650,000. This is not something that. If we need to put aside the 650,000, this is not something that she has these, these families have been in contact with the city and desperate to get their situation fixed for every bit as long as the Vineyard, if not longer. And I know that you know that and I know that it's not your fault, Mr. O'Leary. I'm not trying to at all pass this off as though it's your fault. I know that you weren't, you weren't even in the position that you're in now when that was approved. I 100% get that. But from a council perspective, I can't just say, sure, go ahead and spend $200,000 of the people's money fixing one neighborhood when there are stormwater problems and these families can't get out of their homes. I mean, they, they can't sell them, they can't, they're desperate for help as well. And I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of other wards. I just know that I am speaking on behalf of my ward. So if council wants to continue forward with this, I'm going to be adamant that we're putting money aside for the other ones as well, especially ones that have done what they need to do to communicate with the city. This isn't something, this is no surprise to staff here, I promise you. It's no surprise to Mr. File. And it is beginning to feel like some people are getting serviced while others are not. And that is not okay. So I don't know how other people feel about that, but I, I don't put my foot down often. On this one, I am. This is something that we are not going to just turn our backs on people and help others. And I get that the Vineyard needs help too. And I'm not against helping the Vineyard. I want to help both neighborhoods. So let's put the money aside. I mean, and let's honestly, why don't we do one major infrastructure stormwater project in every ward this year? Why don't we say, you know what, we're going to put aside enough money to take care of the most urgent neighborhood issues for each ward, but not just one ward and not just one neighborhood. That's not okay. Especially when it goes against all precedent that we have done in this city, requiring every, all the other homeowners to foot that bill themselves and it's going on the title of their home and they pay for it whenever they go to sell their house. So that's, I think I've been clear about that. So on to the next thing, as far as the mobile crisis unit, I absolutely agree. The people were clear. Let's go ahead and make sure that we allocate another, well, you know what, let me, let me back up for a second. Mr. Francisco, what is the balance of fund balance?
At the end of fiscal year 22, June 30th of 2022, the general fund balance is projected to be $4,093,000, $93,000, which is 1.68 million dollars above the mandated minimum.
Go ahead.
Well, in, in our previous presentations, we had talked about this and talked about that we had drawn our fund balance down to a dangerously low level and that we were consciously trying to rebuild it. And, and again, I, I would just hope the council will keep that in mind.
Understood. So 1.6 million is the excess above the, the
Above the 3% minimum.
I'm sorry, 3%. So on that 1.6, 600,000 is from is from, sorry, last year, FY '21, that the 600,000 that was for the mobile crisis unit.
You could say that, yes.
Okay.
I would not say mobile crisis unit because council did not appropriate that. You, you had discussed that and, and there were other possibilities that were discussed, but no, no actual appropriation was made.
Okay. All right. So I definitely think that it's going to require more money and matching it because I understand the spirit of what people are wanting. And that is for that allocation going forward, 600,000 or whatever that number may end up being. But I also believe that we need to in addition, do a 200,000 for the automobile that it will require to move this person around, because that's going to be a new and that will come from capital, I assume. But whatever the, the Sprinter vans, I think is what they typically use, something similar to that. That is, you know, ADA approved, all of those kinds of things. We need to make sure that the mobile crisis unit has a mobile element, for lack of a better word. So I think, let's take note on that. Let's see, on the historical markers, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Holman. I wonder how that, how residents from, can put their input in as far as what areas they would like to highlight. I definitely think that we should consider the whole city. And I know that the lake and the history there is an important one to tell. And I hope that we would invite the tribe to come and help us to do that and have a marker that explains the truth about our lake. So, well, the lake, I'm not going to say our. So I, I want that to be on record and hopefully I, I don't think it would be too difficult to, I'm sure that they would be more than eager to be a part of that committee, Mayor. Let's see. I am still supportive of an internal auditor. And so I, I hope that once we're Charter Review Committee has in front of them, that we will be that money will need to be appropriated.
If I may, Councilmember. We are waiting the outcome of the Charter Review Committee, but I would point out that the internal audit function is in the budget. That money has been appropriated.
Okay, I wondered how, we already appropriated it last year, so I didn't rolled into the general fund balance that that probably, yes or no? Hello?
You are freezing up, Councilmember Petron.
Oh, are you there?
We are here, but you are frozen.
All right, we're going to wait for Councilwoman Petron to join us, but lots of hands up.
Oh, I hear you. Can you hear me okay?
You're still frozen.
I'm here, if y'all can hear me. I'm not at the can or not, but, okay, y'all go ahead. I'll circle back. I'll circle back.
Okay. Go to, because we're popping all over the place and I'm, it's kind of hard to track what everyone's thoughts are and how we can answer all the questions. So let's go ahead and Okay, so Anthony gave us the, the high level view, which I think we got it. Let's just go down the line. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns with the increased general fund for the $100,000 membership in the Neighborhood Alliance? Seeing none. Now to the historical markers and signs. Any other comments on that? Great feedback so far, making sure they're inclusive. Thumbs up on that. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just want to also add my support for this, but with all of the comments that have already been made about having some kind of citizen committee. And I know several who have already volunteered and making sure that we're telling the whole story.
All right, any other comments about the historical signs? Councilwoman Studley, or nope, Councilwoman Schuler?
Sure, I, as others have said, I'm supportive of, of this as well as finding, you know, a citizen committee that is finding inclusive, you know, signs for the community to represent our history. I guess my question is, I know that the intent moving forward is to have more signs than just the ones in this fiscal year. So are we prepared to continue this into other fiscal years? Or what, what does that look like? I'm just trying to think big picture and long term. What, what, what does that look like? Have we thought about that?
Absolutely achievable based on the dollar amount of the initial request. That's a, that's a decision that absolutely can be added year over year. Based on the success of the program, the rollout and feedback council receives from the installation of that first go around. And I do think the individuals responsible for bringing that recommendation forward probably have the best idea about how many of those situations currently exist. And we could figure out exactly how long it would take to tackle all of those challenges. But yes, could be done year over year.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a quick question for item two. It says historical markers and signs. At one point it was wayfinding as well, wasn't it? Or did that get taken off?
I do remember the wayfinding conversation and I'll have to consult, our notes was that from Mr. Reeger's comments Tuesday night, but I do remember that topic being included in that conversation.
Well, and again, if we budget for it, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'll just mention that my understanding is that these are historical signs only. Councilmember Carter and Andy Reeger were kind of behind that, that effort. Just because we are the sign shop for the city, we put an estimate together for six signs at $5,000 each. That's how the 30,000 was arrived at. I don't know much more of the details.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification and I'll give a shout out to Legacy Trail. If you all haven't gone there and seen some of the historical signs that we already have, it will sell you on this completely. Councilwoman Petron?
All right, can you all hear me this time? Yes, no? Okay, all right. So my final comment was that I am proposing that we increase the Parks and Rec's maintenance budget, Parks Maintenance Fund. I want to make sure that we are diligently working throughout the entire city to remove the goat head stickers and make sure that, I mean, I know that mowing is because of rain right now, but that Parks and Rec has all the money that they need to be able to keep our parks well maintained. And that's what I'm hearing from residents and I've been hearing it for two years that I've been on council. So I would like to go ahead and make sure that we are listening and putting that money in. And I don't know what the number would be. I'd probably need to hear from Parks and Rec on that.
Yeah, I know we had a conversation with our Parks Superintendent and they do have some products in in, in, in inventory. They know how to address it. And there was some timing, right time of the year, best time to hit it. And if you can freshen our memories on how that process works on the park maintenance side would be great.
Yeah, I can do, try to do my best. It's been a while since I've looked at the email, a few weeks, but I'm going to try to look it up and get a whatever number our superintendent suggested. But the first step is going through there and mowing and trying to catch the mowing and vacuum all those weeds out. And then there's a few treatments, depending on what time of the year, that we can get those treatments down to hopefully kill, kill those stickers. But I'll go through and try to find that number. I believe it was in the $30,000 range. But I don't, I don't know for sure. I, give me a few minutes. I didn't know that was going to come up. So I'll look that up and report back.
That's okay. Let me just add really quickly, with my understanding that these parks that are really overrun would need to be scalped.
Yes, that's part of the, the mowing. So they would go through there and mow as, as low as they can and catch the grass and the weeds, the stickers that go along with that and remove that. And then there would be treatments to go along with that to make sure that we kill the weeds to go, that produces the stickers. Yes, pre and post, both.
And then three or probably, because they have reseeded. So the, my understanding is that you would have to scalp it and that it would treating it is, is more than just a one year type of thing. It's, it's going to be, these things are rather invasive, so.
Yes, it'll take a few years to probably get, get away with or get around it or get over it. But yeah, it'd be more than a one year thing and probably a constant treatment that we need to do. And right now with all the rains, it doesn't help. So that, you know, it'll help, it helps feed the weeds right now. So they're shooting up and spreading everywhere as we speak. And we can't get our mowers out there right now because we have these large commercial mowers that will either, you know, cause ruts.
Or get stuck. I, I totally understand that. If we're needing, I just want to make sure that you're, you know, you have the adequate staff to be able to keep up with, residents want to see a major change on how the parks are maintained. And so I just want to make sure that you have requested adequate staff to do that. If not, I want to make sure that we're adding to it so that you're around that you're able to condition that residents expect. So, and you're new in this job, I get that too, and I want to give you the tools to succeed. So that's what I I don't necessarily expect you to give me that number right at this moment, but just before we would adopt a budget, let's be realistic about what that number is, because I know 30,000 is not going to cover throughout the city. That might be a couple of Ward Three parks, but I, it's not just Ward Three where people are wanting to see a difference, so. Thank you.
No problem. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, I have a point of clarification, please. Are we moving through each one of these items or are we still throwing out other things? Because I actually have
No, I, I don't think Councilwoman Petron heard me when I said, let's go back and go down the line before we start throwing out new ones, but.
Okay, because I have been working since last week on another potential amendment. And I was just going to wait until the end to bring that up, but happy to, you know, throw that out there too, if that, if this is the time, so.
Okay, well, let's get to item three. Does anyone have any problems with HUD giving us more money?
None.
Okay, item four, this is again the, the double counting, so it's, that's a reduction. Any thoughts on that one? No. Item five, the increased risk management fund allocations by 652 plus for workers' comp settlement projections. Anyone got any questions or thoughts on that?
Where would that money come from?
Guessing the general fund.
No, revenue from, to the risk management fund basically comes from premiums to all the departments that have employees for their workers' compensation coverage.
So enterprise funds as well as the general fund. Anthony, are we approximately 50, 50% of our workforce general fund? Is that an approximate?
Approximately 60%.
Got it. So that'll give you an indication about how much that'll be a general fund impact versus an enterprise fund impact.
Okay, any other questions on that item? All right, seeing none. Item six, the increased capital fund allocations. Again, this is just moving geo bond stuff for our capital funds to authorize these projects. No cries of outrage there. Okay, on to, again, reorgan, reordering the projects. Ever since we don't have enough for 36th Avenue to meet with 745,000. Feel like I froze. No, I think that's a, a great example of how we can get that project done. So we should do it. That makes sense. Uh, item eight, decreasing capital fund allocations by 733,600 for the Vineyard Edition Flood Control Project. Councilmember Holman.
Um, okay. So I definitely, um, support the equity argument when it comes to this. Um, but what I think I heard from Sean O'Leary though, is that the city has spent over half a million dollars in Cambridge, um, over a number of years addressing stormwater issues. Problem still isn't fixed though. Um, so it would seem to me that Cambridge has received more money as a neighborhood than any other neighborhood in the city so far. Um, so maybe there is some confusion on my part as far as that timeline goes, but that's what I heard from Sean was that we have spent a lot of money trying to address the issues in Cambridge already. And what I would think I would like to see here is that maybe we change the work amendment so it isn't specific to the vineyard. Um, and less, more so just towards stormwater projects or however it might need to be worded. Um, I would ask if Sean would clarify this, does it need to be specifically allocated to this to get the grant? Or can we just have funds set aside for stormwater, neighborhood stormwater solutions? Um, that the grant, that would still make it eligible for the grant. And that way, if we do get the grant, um, and we have a bunch of savings, then that could go towards Cambridge, Summit Lakes, whatever other neighborhoods, um, in this coming fiscal year. Is that, um, an option for us?
I might need Anthony's help, counselor, but I, I certainly think that's an option. We, we were, just because we have this active grant application moving forward on, on Vineyard, we put it in under that context to be clear. But certainly you could make it more of a general program, uh, for future grant opportunities.
Okay, that's, that might be a compromise we could think about there is that, um, yeah.
The only reason, if I may, the only reason that the amendment is worded the way that it is is that the title of the project that is in the budget and that has been in the budget is Vineyard. There's also a project for Misty Lake Dam. There's a project for Imhoff Creek Stormwater. There's a project for Lake Thunderbird TMBL. And there's a project for, um, to come to in 36 Northwest Channel. And those are just the stormwater force account projects that are in the budget now. And if you were to amend the budget, you would need to amend the budget for those projects that are listed now.
Okay. Um, okay. I would, uh, like I said, like to, have the flexibility to budget for the, budget that amount and then, um, be able to use it for other projects. Um, other stormwater projects throughout the city in neighborhoods specifically, I would say, um, should we be successful with this grant? Um, I would love to be able to, uh, fix the biggest project in Ward seven, but that's going to need about $5 million. So, um, Lindsay and Elm Street. Um, so probably going to need a bond for that one or utility in a few. Um, but, uh, that's kind of my thoughts on how we might address making sure that we're addressing neighborhoods throughout the city in a equitable manner. And hopefully, like I said, this grant, maybe it can be the first of many. I would hope that, um, that Sean's right about the current administration and infrastructure, uh, spending that might be geared towards this and really help us, um, address some of these big projects we have pending. So that's kind of my thoughts on that particular item at this time. Thanks.
All right, we got lots of hands up. Councilmember Hall.
So I, um, really understand, um, where Councilmember Petron is coming on this. This is a project that we talked about last year too. And I think the, um, one of the, the other issues that I would like clarification for, and especially for, um, those who might be listening in is I think what part of this issue is and why it is contentious is because, um, we, we are asking or requiring certain neighborhoods to, um, provide funding to solve their stormwater problems. Yet we have other neighborhoods that, um, apparently qualify for, um, FEMA grant funding, which is great. I mean, I want to take advantage of every federal dollar that we can get our hands on. But I think the larger issue is, um, you know, HOAs, what they're responsible for. Um, you know, a lot of it revolves around detention ponds that were created by the developer for that individual neighborhood that end up being the collector for a lot of upstream development that, that happens. And so I think what we really need to be thinking about is how we prioritize these projects and how we figure out um, some equity in what we're expecting certain neighborhoods to pay for. And other neighborhoods, we are able to find these other solutions. So to me, that's, that's part of some of the confusion with this of, you know, it is the Vineyard neighborhood and I'm assuming they're an HOA. What are they contributing to this project?
I'm not aware of any contribution from the neighborhood in this case. I, I can only tell you that from our standpoint is we select these projects. And there's about a dozen in your proposed FY22 program this year for about 2.6 million. Um, the way we prioritize those are real serious flooding situations where people are being hurt. Their properties are being damaged. We actually have water in homes, uh, public safety concerns. Uh, the one in Ward four is Imhoff Creek for 550,000. That has been a, uh, problem for several decades and literally the backyards of properties are falling away into the creek. So each one of them is a little different. But what we try to do is identify those that are, that are causing the most damage, not just those that are nuisance water, that sort of thing.
Okay. I, I, I really understand that. And, um, I am completely supportive of any stormwater project that we can accomplish for any neighborhood because we all have a very clear understanding that the need is, is great in, when it comes to stormwater mitigation. But I guess what I'm trying to get the answer to is when, you know, what is the difference between expecting certain neighborhoods to contribute to the mitigation and certain neighborhoods don't have to?
Again, I, I think it's public drainage infrastructure versus private. And, and you are right that the Vineyard Edition is uh, probably one of the first times when we are, uh, proposing to, uh, spend public dollars on a privately owned detention basin. Uh, we don't do that ever, uh, very often. The difference here is this one actually has a public drainage easement dedicated when the plant was filed. And, um, and, and the grant through FEMA does authorize federal funds to be spent in an application like this. That's, that's why we sought it out for this particular neighborhood. We'd never seen that grant program. We didn't think it was available and, uh, and we found out that it was. Uh, it's all about, uh, flood mitigation. The FEMA program is designed to try to mitigate flooding, including spending those federal dollars on, uh, public drainage easements that might even be privately owned by an HOA. So that's kind of what made it unique to this project.
So are there, are there other, I mean, you mentioned that we have 60 stormwater projects in the queue. So are there other neighborhood projects that would qualify for this type of grant? And is this, you know, a grant that's available to us? Is this, this just this year or ongoing or?
Yeah, I think, uh, I probably misspoke there. I should have said 60 million in grant, in projects. And there was about, I think, 33 that were actually identified. So three, uh, plus in each, uh, each of the eight wards.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, well, I think that's, we hope that's the case. This is the first time we've ever pursued this grant program. And if we're successful, then we'd like to pursue it more perhaps next year. And, and yes, ma'am, we have more candidates for stormwater improvements than most cities in Oklahoma. So I'm sure there are other candidates for this grant program and other grant programs as they can be available. Uh, this one was teed up because council had allocated funding for the design. That's, that's sort of why it, uh, was a top choice. Uh, previously council has allocated the funding to, to design the, the solution. We have that. We're ready to go to construction. And this grant program through FEMA is a shovel ready, uh, program. So we, we, that's sort of why it fit also.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
So I share with Councilmember Petron all of her concerns. I personally have a lot of heartburn with this particular one, although I can be very sympathetic to people that experience this. Um, the next amendment we're going to talk about is I'm proposing a million dollars to help the whole city. This is almost a million dollars just to help a few houses. So I, I do kind of struggle with that. I would not be in favor of approving this amendment if we think we're only going to need 25% of that. If we don't get the grant and we approve this amendment for the 753,000, I don't feel comfortable with that. Um, I would want some friendly amendment attached to it saying pending the approval of this grant. If not, then we'll have to revisit it. Um, I do have some issues that we haven't even approached the HOA and a cost sharing. If my sidewalk, um, gets destroyed, I have to pay for it. Sometimes the city will help me, sometimes not. Um, so I do, I do take, um, particular issue with that. So I would want to see an amendment to this, or I would just not be in favor of approving this one.
I would also support an amendment, making sure that unless the, the grant gets approved, it won't be spent. Cause it's not 700 something, it's 188, but that's, that's, that's enough. Okay. Councilmember Studley.
I just kind of want to piggyback off what Allison and, um, Stephen Tyler Holman were saying about the equity in this. Um, I know I have personally toured some properties in Ward one and Ward seven in the last couple of weeks. Um, both of which have some really sad, um, issues with storm drainage. And I know Lee Hall had said, you know, let's look at the HOA, but I just want to go on record as saying, let's look at the developers. And why are they not accountable for this issue that's going on in our city right now? Um, we have Ward one that they voted and had, uh, the neighborhood in Summit Lakes, um, HOA to pay. And that still hasn't been fixed yet. And now that same neighborhood right to the, to the E or to the, uh, south of it is going to be developed and they're in the talks of negotiating with, um, some new buyers of that land. And they're already flooding out in that property in Sienna, uh, Sienna Springs, um, from them bulldozing some trees for a development that they haven't even started yet. And that's causing more issues in, um, Summit Lakes as well as on East Lindsay in that area. It's cracking, it's flooding. Um, so where is the equity in this? And I just think it's odd, and I'm just going to say it, that a formal, uh, city staff or council member is getting a little bit of, uh, extra treatment here is what it looks like to me. So, uh, I appreciate what Elizabeth Foreman is saying of, yes, we want to help, but it's not fair to do it, uh, if we're not going to do it for everyone. And that is a big ask, 700 and something thousand, and we only need 100 and something thousand. So I would be, um, up for an amendment saying it's contingent on the grant. Thanks.
Councilmember Peacock.
Thanks. Yeah, um, I definitely, I mean, I can see, uh, everybody's concerns and how the equity needs to be distributed fairly across the board. So I think I would support a, almost a, a general line item in every budget going forward from this year. Uh, that was just a small amount of money used to address certain stormwater problems, whether that's one project a year or even odd wards every year rotating, or maybe just a small, small project across every ward every year. But I do think that, you know, we need to start, um, eating this elephant one bite at a time because waiting until we get a stormwater utility is just, I, I think we're, we're, we're spending valuable time where we could be doing something and, and waiting on a perfect solution. So I would be in favor of at least just trying to, uh, approach these in small bites. Definitely.
If, if I may, council member, I would say that, that we are doing and, and have been doing that for many years. There's, there's 175,000 or $200,000 per year that is allocated for drainage projects that are basically determined during the course of the year based on needs or emergency needs. But, but we are trying to address it one bite at the elephant at a time. That's.
Well, I certainly appreciate you, uh, bringing that up. Thank you.
Councilman Petron.
So the HOA conversation is an interesting one. How much, you said you're not aware of the HOA pitching in anything to do with the improvement in their neighborhood. Are you? Why not? Why, why aren't we asking the HOA to? Cause I, and, and I also want to make sure that we understand on Cambridge, I'm talking about Cambridge Place, not actually Cambridge that has the regional detention bond. I'm talking about Cambridge Place that has no detention bond except for their streets. So, and no HOA. Um, but I do want to understand what is, um, it, why isn't the Vineyard's HOA paying for this? Or offering to do any?
I can only tell you, Councilmember, I've worked with them for many years and we have had that conversation numerous times and the HOA has opted not to offer, uh, a contribution.
So you have a prob, have you considered that there's going to be a precedent set from here on? The HOAs are just going to say, why would we? When?
So Mary, I'm going to jump in here as the council member who very much advocated for this solution and it's years in the making. And we're so close with grant money. So you may not have been on council at this point, but the, the history of it is that there was an issue that approved the defective retention basin basically. And I think that's why the HOA said, you know, we had engineers, you signed off on it. Now somebody has to fix it. My. Mr.
I think that's somewhat accurate, Mary. Again, we don't approve any designs. We review all of the developers, engineers work and there's a long history to this. It's 25 years old, but bottom line is the design engineer for the subdivision undersized the detention basin. That's really what happened here. And, uh, water flows through and, and floods several properties. So, um, no, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the precedent, Councilmember, uh, Petron here because this is a grant application that from, for me, that makes a difference. Is that a, it is a, it, again, if the grant is successful, it'll be the first time we've ever gotten a hazard mitigation grant in Norman, and hopefully that will be the first of many in, in other applications where it, where.
Okay, and I already have design work and, and pre-engineering stuff. Um, the portion, uh, the construction, the actual infrastructure project was on the homeowners. Um, and that went on to their title. So whenever they go to sell their, um, they're going to have how many rooftops divided by the total amount. That's, you know, what's going to be on their title. So why are we not considering doing the same thing with this 188,000? That it goes on to the homeowners. Why do they, why do these homeowners get to not have to pay for any of the construction, but Summit Lakes did when it's actually, they didn't really even need to do it. The danger was in Royal Oaks. So they were doing it on behalf of other neighborhoods. Um, do you see the disparity here? Why are we charging, um, Summit Lakes homeowners, but we're not charging the homeowners and be a, a recoupment type of situation?
Yeah, and Councilor, right. The, the Summit Lakes case is very different than the Vineyard case. Summit Lakes owns a, uh, a dam that is unstable. That's very clear. It is not Royal Oaks that owns the dam. It's Summit Lakes that owns the dam. The dam is a high hazard dam and been declared unstable and easily repaired. Uh, the city has offered to assist them with engineering services. And I'm seeing in FY22, it looks like about 40,000 that were contributing to that. And there's been other contributions in previous years to Summit Lakes. So again, I think we have sort of taken each of these problems as they've come to us and council has given us direction accordingly. So again, I think we have sort of taken each of these problems as they've come to us and council has given us direction accordingly. Uh, we did suggest that the Vineyard addition contribute and the HOA declined to, to participate. I, I think what I've heard from them on numerous meetings out there are that uh there are probably two hundred rooftops in Vineyard and about eight to ten properties are experiencing flooding. The other hundred and ninety folks are not interested in paying for the ten that are in trouble. And we get that a lot. We hear that in lots of neighborhoods. We heard that during the stormwater election, that lots of our voters don't want to pay for other folks who are flooding. Unfortunately, stormwater is a system and we're going to have to figure out a way to, to get it all paid for. We just thought this was a good opportunity to pursue federal grant money to solve one of those problems.
I disagree that getting federal grant money is a good idea. Obviously, it's a great idea. What I'm trying to understand is why, I mean, and Cambridge Place was a, exactly what you just said. It's not every home that's flooding in Cambridge Place. And now they don't have the HOA to be able to, you know, fall back on here, but um who, who was the developer of Cambridge Place?
Hmm, I, I'm not recalling. That one's pretty old. Um, it, it might have been Dean McCann, but I'm, I'm not sure that he was involved in that one.
Does anybody else on the call know who the developer was? Okay, um, so I, I guess, you know, this comes back to the same thing as what, you know, the Vineyard is experiencing and that the developer um created a faulty drainage. And so in that now, you know, Cambridge Place is middle-class homes, um, working-class homes. But still, this is something that I just don't feel like some neighborhoods are more worthy of, of major help from the city um and others aren't simply because their property values aren't the same or whatever. Um, and that's exactly what it looks like. This is, because it is, I mean, quite frankly. So you guys, if you want to support that's on you. Opportunity and they have been every bit banging down the doors of City Hall, trying his desperately plea for help. And they're, they're not getting it. So I don't, I don't know why this one does and the other ones don't. And I would be more than happy to say, all right, let's go with what councilmember Peacock did, what he just said, except for I'd say make them a larger project, but please be quiet. Make them larger projects and, and say, you want to do two hundred thousand per ward? Great, let's do two hundred thousand per ward. But I don't, I don't see how anybody's okay with just giving it to one and not the others. And yes, I'm very grateful for the grants. Um, it's Mayor, I mean, it's fine.
Okay, we've been advocating for this years.
I'm glad that you have.
It's design ready, it's grant ready. I hope we can, I hope we can set the precedent where we utilize grants to solve stormwater projects. I don't know why we have to punish the Vineyard for strong advocates who help move the process along, like what you're doing right now.
You're making it sound like they haven't been advocating for themselves and they have. I guarantee, you know what? Uh, city manager pile, do you know, um, have you received any emails from Cambridge Place? You've only been here for, what, a year and a half? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Um, I do know what you're talking about. Um, and I know that um for a variety of reasons, each one of the projects on the list literally has its own uh life based on all of the factors that led to the current situation, uh, having a project identified and listed. In the particular case of Vintage Creek, that, yeah, there was a specific council action in years past um to move forward with the design on the solution. And I think um based on the ownership of that detention slash retention pond, um, whether it was part of an HOA or out on some separate parcel that was not owned by the HOA and not the impacts necessarily of the Vintage Creek um design. But another neighborhood not related to Vintage Creek being built uphill, whose stormwater solution obviously uh didn't appropriately hold off the runoff from the upstream uh neighborhood resulted in this one. So yeah, council took a specific action to uh allocate funds for the design, which is why this one is on the path it is on. So um it, staff's happy to take these in any order council sees as, as appropriate. Um, in, in each one of the ones that uh Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Francisco have identified, each one has a very unique, specific story as to why it's on the list. Um, what we think may have gone wrong in either the initial design or the design of some other neighborhood that was not calculated in the sizing of the, of the issue at hand. But yeah, aware of several of these all over town, um, this one just happened to line up with work completed at council, at a prior council's direction and the grant opportunity that uh Dr. Evenson was able to identify.
All right. Well, if we're going to move forward on this, I would like to propose an amendment that um council allocates today on um passing this budget, the design work for um for Cambridge Place. There's got to be an answer here, guys. That's not just this one neighborhood and a few houses are literally going into our capital budget for an infrastructure project that we've never done on behalf of any other neighborhood. And suddenly we're doing it now, while there are other people who are swimming to their front doors. This is ridiculous.
I'll support design work, but don't punish the Vineyard because they have design work.
I'm not punishing the Vineyard.
Yes, you are. That's how it's qualifying for the grant.
Mayor, then it really comes across that we've punished Summit Lakes because they shouldn't have had to pay for theirs at all either. This is, they're, they're not having to pay anything. This is a new thing for this city. Do you understand that? That means everybody before them has been punished. All I'm saying is
Mr. O'Leary, is this a new grant?
This is a new grant, Mayor, but, but the city has typically paid for stormwater improvements in neighborhoods, including Cambridge Place, over half a million dollars. So it's, it's pretty common that we have spent public dollars in neighborhoods for stormwater improvements, uh, whether they have an HOA or not.
Okay, yeah, and Stephen did make a point. He said that Cambridge Place has received more stormwater funding than any other neighborhood in the entire city. Is that true?
Don't know about that, councilmember. Um, but I, but certainly uh half a million dollars is a large expenditure um in one neighborhood. It would be among the top ten, certainly.
Yeah, there is, because that neighborhood did not have a, the city didn't require a detention pond at all to be put in. And it is at the bottom of the hill, by the way. When you drive home, you might want to take note of that. Um, runoff coming rather quickly down that creek, that's a whole different situation in Cambridge Place. I'm actually talking about, there's several parts of this neighborhood that are in trouble, but I'm actually discussing a different part that hasn't had any. Except for that I think that the city did go ahead and buy the house next door, and I believe that this homeowner would be happy with that as well, if you want to buy her house up.
The city is offering properties in Cambridge Place, councilmember. There, there was a previous uh legal lawsuit, but it did not result. And it was uh one in favor of the city.
Uh, councilmember Castlemary told me that uh this, that his, one of the councils, uh, while he was there, did buy out one of the houses because of stormwater.
It has been suggested. It's never happened.
Well, maybe that would be an answer to um some of this as well then. Maybe it doesn't take infrastructure projects, but we just need to due to being overly eager on approving projects, maybe we need to buy out some houses. Um, and maybe that's the answer on the Vineyard, quite frankly, but um, I don't know. But all I'm saying is that, to me, it sounds like that if we're going to make a whole new, you know, residents aren't going to be responsible at all, neighborhoods aren't going to be responsible at all for the um, if there's a grant involved, then they don't, you know, whether it's a seventy-five, twenty-five or eighty, twenty, or whatever it is. If, if um neighborhoods aren't going to be required to, to put forward any money into it at all, then I think we need to let them know that this is a new program that we're going to be doing and that HOAs, if you have one, they're not going to be responsible for putting forward any money. If you don't have an HOA, you know, it's no different. You're not going to have to put forward any money. Um, assuming that there's some grant money in, involved, because that's what we're deciding here with this. And I don't know. I, I'm just
Some legal issues here uh that have come up. When we look at each of these projects, we look at them individually. So I think our first one, I don't know, Sean, in two thousand nine, I think we partnered with Cascade uh for a small project. But our first big one to, to partner with was Cedar Lakes. And we didn't partner with funding, we partnered with filling. And that's because that's a detention pond that only serves the neighborhood. It's not part of a chain of detention ponds or part of the city system in any way. And so we partnered, but we didn't put any funds up. We just collected the funds for them. Then came Summit Lakes, also a private pond, not part of detention, not part of stormwater drainage at all. But it was a public safety issue. And so we partnered with them and provided the engineering. Uh, and we're, we are in the process of finalizing those specifications to put that out to bid. Um, so you'll be seeing that in the next couple of months to get construction started. Um, when it comes to the Vineyard, it's the same thing. It's receiving, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to be an engineer here.
Way of doing this. We're just going to start doing
Stormwater from neighborhoods further north and then going into, is it Woodcrest Creek?
Right, you didn't get runoff coming from Highland Village into Vineyard.
And so that is, is why it's become a city issue and why the city has been willing to get engaged in that, engaged in it over the past four or five years. It's not the same as just servicing people's detention ponds that are supposed to be managed by the HOA that only benefit the neighborhood. Better tie it to some other purpose. And we look at that with each and every project to make sure that that's something that can be justified.
Okay, well, this is actually a similar situation though, because they don't even have an detention pond. This is increased runoff from new development.
You're cutting out again. And I, I don't know anything about this neighborhood. I haven't heard of it before. So I'm not, definitely not speaking to that neighborhood because I'm not
The bottom of the hill, it's not any different. We're making it a citizen. Pass it on to some other council members, but I mean, I'll, when it comes time to adopt this, um, you know, I, don't be surprised if there are other homeowners that are going to come forward and really wonder why they're um not be, be serviced.
Mr. O'Leary, is it possible to, do you know off the top of your head, the cost of design work to get this, this program in the same spot as the Vineyard happened to be for this grant?
Thank you, Mayor. We're, we're looking at it. Um, again, I want to correct the record. I've gotten several emails. The developer of Cambridge Place was Don Si, Si Development Company. Um, also developed all the Brookhaven additions upstream. And in fact, it's, it's his own other subdivisions that are discharging water down to Cambridge Place, ironically. But um, so we've been looking at the next project in Cambridge Place. And we think that um the design fees would be about fifty thousand, fifty to a hundred thousand uh to take us to the next level of, of um what we think to be a large channel repair project on the north side of Cambridge Place.
Okay, I know that we're going to get infrastructure money with ARP, but I've also got the impression that stormwater and water projects, um, we could fund here if possible. Is, I mean, is fifty grand reasonable? Can I make an amendment for that?
That would get us started. We'd love, again, we'd love to do more projects and solve these problems. Um, so happy to, happy to move forward if, if you want to appropriate those funds.
Um, and Madam Mayor, a couple of thoughts. Um, one, the infrastructure package currently uh in debate in the nation's capital. Uh, we believe stormwater projects will be absolutely doable from uh any federal infrastructure package we may see come our way. And Mr. Francisco, of the things in ARPA eligibility, they, they talked about water um as one of those components. And uh, I believe wastewater and stormwater could be components of approved ARPA capital projects.
Yes, basically under the guidelines, anything that qualifies for statewide revolving fund loans would qualify under the ARPA guidelines. So we have gotten some stormwater projects under the SRF program. So yes, I would think it qualifies.
That could provide council with funding to identify, you know, in any order council sees appropriate uh stormwater capital projects, which could be located in every ward uh to be addressed through ARPA funding or a federal infrastructure package that could come our way before the end of the calendar year. Just thoughts for your consideration.
With that in mind, I'd support fifty thousand dollars allocating and then if we need to cover the rest of it. Okay, beans.
We can write that up as
Okay.
I want to, I want to make sure that I'm clear that Mayor, that your proposal is that we would um reallocate fifty thousand dollars of the funds that are currently allocated to the Vineyard project to that. Is that?
I was going to find a different source and we're not in the red on that one, but we should get some of that back, correct?
Uh, potentially um our ability to advance the work. Uh, when we go out to design, Mr. O'Leary, is that a, a a package that we bring council for uh permission to advertise that design work? Uh, that fifty thousand dollar range puts this in a biddable scenario where council would approve and could potentially approve the funding as fast as Mr. O'Leary can put together the RFP for that engineering work uh for this uh other neighborhood. Uh, when we bring that back to council, we could potentially bring you the ability to uh amend the budget or you may have that solution provided through your uh retreat and ARPA funding. So um that one, we see plenty of dollars. It's just a matter of timing, how fast Mr. O'Leary could move on the RFP versus when council may choose to appropriate money to uh be able to award that engineering contract.
So I'm clear. Can I ask a question on this? Just so I'm clear, by engineering contract, do you mean that you're going to fix the channel, you're going to fix Cambridge Place? Like it's part, going to be part of the capital budget this year?
Um, the design uh work would be the first step in making sure there is an engineered solution that would tell us what the construction project is. And then uh we would go out to bid for the construction of whatever the design engineers uh identifies the appropriate solution.
So no? Is basically the answer.
Uh, we, we'll go as fast as council wishes us to go and as fast as uh third-party consultants are able to supply the work.
All right, councilmember Studley.
I think Holman was before me, but I'll go. Okay. Um, I was just going to ask a couple of questions. So one, is, is the Vineyard considered a high hazard um flooding? Or like, is it, is it impacted outside of the neighborhood?
No, ma'am. Like, the term high hazard is usually used uh with dams. We have three high hazard dams in Norman. One is in Summit Lakes. One is in Hall Park and one is in uh Sutton Wilderness. That, we don't use that term much on other projects, but the, the, as Catherine said, the flooding and the, the flooding of the homes is in the Vineyard addition, but the stormwater runoff is coming from upstream subdivisions like Highland Village and others.
So could we not get any of those upstream subdivisions to help contribute to this cost?
Not that I'm aware of, ma'am.
Okay.
They, they've all met their own stormwater requirements when they were plowed and the council approved those, those plans.
Okay, um, and then I, I do have another question about, um, I know that there has been a um development with Eagle Cliff. And according to the people at Potts Farm, that I watched their flooded farm with just a little bit of rain and all the trash that gets down in there. Um, they are under the impression that the developers of Eagle Cliff chose or sought to pay fines and that the city allowed them to pay fines in lieu of uh properly draining the stormwater. And so i- is that a real thing? Is there really such a thing where a developer can choose to pay fines in lieu of?
No, ma'am. That's not a, that's not a thing that I'm aware of. We don't, we, we don't issue fines for stormwater.
Okay, so are developers at all held accountable then if the, if it's not properly draining?
Yes, um, again, there are many stormwater regulations, state and local, and we are actively inspecting for those. We issue um We issue notices of noncompliance and that sort of thing, and what we're looking for is compliance, and we typically get it, but sometimes it's a reminder to the developer during construction. But for some time, forever, actually, we've not issued fines. We could. It is an option the city has. We've opted not to do that up to this point.
Would you not agree if we had some fines from these developers or money that it would definitely help to pay for these future issues?
I don't know that fines would generate the kind of money that we're talking about here, but I think the real key is just getting each development to do the the right thing and to build the improvements. So again, my sense is that about ninety-eight percent of developments are in great shape and always do the right thing. There's that two percentile where something goes wrong. And we have problems like Summit Lakes, for instance. No one ever imagined twenty years ago that the Summit Lakes Dam was going to be designated high hazard and become a problem. That wasn't anyone's fault.
I mean, I would disagree that it's more than two percent that's having issues. We're looking at Eagle Cliff, Summit Lakes, Santa Springs. The neighborhood I live in, Wood Creek Edition, we have issues here. So I would politely disagree with you, and I'm curious who is following up with these developers?
But we have, again, we have a city regulations for plating controls. Public Works and Planning are the key managers of development process, or our staff is in the field ensuring that those public improvements are addressed with each approval of plat by council.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I definitely agree there is a, there is a serious problem in South Eagle Cliff and Eagle Cliff Section Seven that's being constructed right now. I strongly encourage anybody to go down and check it out. It is a real problem. It's been brought to my attention, but on the issues we're talking about right now, I definitely support an amendment to basically put the basis on the funding for the Vineyard on the grant approval that it will expend that money should the grant be successful. If not, then we reexamine it when we get the federal funds that can be for infrastructure. Maybe the council at that time decides to use that funding to get the project done if the grant isn't successful. I think that could be a good compromise, an amendment that puts the funding, you know, on the basis that we get the grant funding. My concern a little bit is that like we have seen with stormwater utility discussion, that certain parts of the city think that, well, my street or my neighborhood doesn't have any flooding problems, so why should I pay for problems in Ward Four or Ward Five or Ward Seven or anywhere else? And it can get down onto a macro level even. One of the top flooding problems in all of Norman is just one block from my house right now at Lindsay and Elm Street. And all two blocks north of my house or north of my block, so Lindsay Street. I live south of Lindsay Street. The two blocks north of Lindsay Street on College flood over the curb and into the front lawns. And then Lindsay and Elm Street, the intersection is underwater, and it's used in all the news media pictures. Meantime, it floods in the metro. They use a picture of Lindsay and Elm, and they show people canoeing through it or whatever. And that's just one block from my house. I can see the intersection from my living room window. But my block actually, south of Lindsay Street, does not flood at all. There's not even a puddle in front of my house, and my house is about six feet off the, I have a raised front yard, and then I have a three-foot porch, front porch, because the house has a basement. So my house is not really at risk at all of flooding. But one of the top flooding problems in the city is just one block over from me. And I don't want the city to have the attitude that just because it's not, basically, it's not my problem, so I'm not going to do anything to address problems other people are having. That's kind of what's going on in the Vineyard is that, for whatever reason, the neighborhood doesn't, I guess, feel a real sense of community, and a bunch of the neighbors don't feel like, well, it's not my house, it's not my street, so oh, well, to the neighbors that live on that street in the Vineyard that flood. And I don't want us to have that attitude in Norman where we say, well, it's not my problem, and I shouldn't have to deal with it. Because as a city, we all are paying taxes, and we spend money to address problems all over the city. That's what living in a city is kind of all about, is that we use our collective resources to collectively address the problems that we're all having. Maybe individual ones of us are not having that problem, but if I were to have a problem, I would want other people in the city to be okay with helping me out, just as I am okay helping out the flooding issues that don't affect my house or my street, but do affect the area near me and do affect people I care about all throughout the city. But we do, I absolutely agree, we have to do this in a way that doesn't make it look like we are spending tons of money to help one neighborhood, that we're letting anybody off of the hook here. And I would definitely be okay with the city funding things like design and helping neighborhoods understand what it is that they have to do to fix the problem. And then if this grant opportunities are there, maybe we can start applying applying that to all these other areas. So I definitely support funding the design option for Cambridge Place, so we know exactly what needs to be done. And that puts us, we put them in the same position that the Vineyard is in now, where they're able to qualify for grant funding, or if, you know, again, if we get depending on the federal funding we might get, deciding as a council, how much of that do we want to use for stormwater issues? And so my thoughts are just that when it comes to stormwater, as has been mentioned by staff and other council members, it is a system, it's connected system, and upstream affects downstream, and it's just we have to address these problems, and it may be one at a time, but I don't want us to get in a position where we don't address any of them because we can't decide or we don't want somebody else to go first or whatever it is. So I think some pretty good potential compromises have been mentioned here about making it based on the grant funding and funding the design for Cambridge Place. And I think that might not be a bad precedent to set, though, is when there's issues, the city helps out with things like design or helping neighborhoods understand and address what the problem actually is and then go from there. So that's my thoughts right now. Thanks.
All right, that was a lovely discussion. Any other thoughts on this one before we take a break and dive into the next one?
If I may, Mayor, I want to make sure that I'm clear that council's direction is basically there would not be an amendment on this one. Basically, you're saying that the money would remain allocated but not be spent unless the grant is successful. Is that correct?
That's my.
I believe so. I broke up the.
Sorry. I was just going to say, that's my kind of understanding of it, but I probably would be okay with that fifty thousand for the design of Cambridge Place coming out of that, too.
Assuming we get reimbursed, right? I mean, that's how the grant works. We allocate the whole money upfront. If we get the grant, then we go ahead and do our portion, and then, I mean, am I wrong on how that works?
Yeah, the appropriation, we would need to appropriate the entire project cost with the dollars coming from two sources, the local match out of the city's budget and then the grant. And yes, if the grant did not appear, we would not be able to advance the project to be able to go out to bid. We would not go out to bid on this project until the grant dollars were approved and in hand.
And so.
And at that point, council could transfer those funds from this, from this project to the design of the Cambridge Place project or anything else. Remember that only council can transfer between projects.
And so we're allocating the full amount. The grant's going to come. I'm sorry, my Wi-Fi is terrible tonight. Go ahead.
I'll just mention, Mayor, that when grants of this type come, the council must accept them and then must allocate the local funds accordingly. So you will see it if it happens. If it doesn't happen, we'll report it to you, and the funds will go to fund balance.
And I'm just trying to make sure I wrap my head around it because we're allocating the full thing, hoping to get a grant which will reimburse us for that portion. So we would have where to go? The, did not write that down, apparently. The one, seven fifty-three minus one eighty-eight, would it almost be like a bonus because the grant paid us back? Well, then, yeah, if we get approved, I would. Five sixty-five, okay. Yeah, put that towards the next one. Seeing thumbs up on that, Councilor.
For historical perspective, did the Vineyard, did the city pay for the design work in the Vineyard like it did for Summit Lakes?
Yes.
Okay, so I am definitely supportive of the city paying for the design work as well as the infrastructure projects, whatever the portion is, grant or not, especially when there's no HOA. But I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with this, that it's not going to come back at Cambridge Place on their rooftops to for the infrastructure project, just like it's not coming back. I mean, my understanding is that the city, if it wanted to, could definitely do the recoupment on behalf of the entire Vineyard. It's not just not just the few houses that might be affected by it, but just because the HOA doesn't want to do it, the city could require them to do it and could come back and put it on their titles, on all the rooftops to divvy up that hundred and eighty-eight thousand. But since we're choosing not to go that route, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we're not going to turn around and do that to houses that are half the cost of the Vineyards when it comes time to do that work this year. And my understanding is that that's this year, like in this capital budget.
Councilor, I'm not aware of that being an option for the city, that we can impose the cost of infrastructure on private properties without them first initiating the petition. I've never seen that done.
It's happened throughout the city on stormwater projects.
No, ma'am, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, well, then why would it happen to like Summit Lakes?
They are initiating the project. We are managing it for them.
So, so they could have just done nothing and flooded out Royal Oaks. And there's nothing the city could have done about it.
The state is requiring them to repair the dam, and we are assisting them in that process. And then when it is repaired, the city has agreed to maintain the dam going forward.
Okay.
Subdivision project. It's their project. It's their dam today.
Okay, I understand that it's thirty and today. I'm just, it's not something that was an emergency for them particularly. It was for a different neighborhood. You know, it wouldn't have flooded out Summit Lakes. Summit Lakes would have been fine. It was the downstream neighbors, again, that weren't going to be fine. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that everybody's on the same page here, that we're picking up the bill for the Vineyard, and we're going to pick up the bill for Cambridge Place. Is that what we're saying?
If there's grants and the design will get us on that path. So I love the precedent, and I appreciate your passionate advocacy for Ward Three this evening for stormwater, which, again, we've all got a long list of things that we need to work on, but you got to start somewhere. So. All right. Anyone have any other final thought? Direction you need? Okay, all right, let's take a five-minute break, stretch our legs, and then we will come back and tackle our final amendment, which is number nine, but also any other suggestions that council members have. I got you, Councilmember Hall. Sure.
Thank you.
Come on back, friends.
Too tired to talk about my own amendment now.
You got this. Got a few more that need to come back. There's one. All right, we're still missing a couple. All right, there's Councilmember Nash. Hold on one more minute.
And so with item number nine, an increase in general fund allocations to the city council department budget by one million dollars for a pilot participatory budgeting program. Councilmember Foreman, I'll turn it over to you.
So this is something I've been thinking about since before I got on council. It was something that inspired me to want to get on council. I feel like I've had a pulse on the city for a few years now and kind of the consistent theme is it's our taxpayer money. You don't do the things that we want you to do, or you're doing things we definitely don't want you to do. Fix these projects, do these things. And like we've seen so far this evening, you know, we don't have dedicated funding for these types of things. I know I've requested a bench slash bus stop, and that's not happening. And I know it's about five thousand dollars to do that. And so, inspired by people from our first round of Cares funding and this next round of funding that we're getting, people want to say, and people want to see these things get done. And so there is something called participatory budgeting, where the council allocates specific amount of money. And I've kind of equated it to like a backwards Norman forward, instead of saying, we have projects and we want to tax you to fund these projects. It's we have the money, you give us the projects. So how it would work is that the ward representatives would meet with their ward, meet with the city, however we decide to do it. And then the public would compile a list of projects, things that they want to see get done, like stormwater issues, et cetera. And they would turn that list over to staff and staff would price these things and say, well, these are how much these things would cost. And then the city would vote on them. So it's not each ward gets allocated its own share. It's collectively as a community, like Councilmember Holman said, I don't live anywhere near Lindsay and Elm, but that's still an issue for people in my city. So these are things that it's not just councils deciding, we're not choosing it. It's stuff that the public have been asking us for. And we're just now saying, okay, well, we have dedicated funding and we're going to commit to doing these projects. So this is what I put forth to you all.
And what's the breakdown of the million dollars?
Whatever we come up with. If we put in fifty park benches, you know, that's however many thousands of dollars and whatever people want, it just has whatever people vote on, it just adds up to a million dollars and then we execute. It could be any dollar amount.
Do you worry about kind of what we've been discussing with the equity piece, which Norman's very, very big on, especially in terms of elections? Staff does a great job of there's something in every ward. I mean, do you worry about Ward Six getting a bench and Ward Eight getting something fabulous? Not saying benches aren't fabulous, which also reminds me, I got. Yes. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm not worried about that. It is something that the city meets collectively for, and that's why I don't like the idea of like, oh, well, this is what this ward wants sort of thing. Because it could, I think it could turn out more that way. In the end, this is something that we're all collectively talking about. I've had people ask, can we put more dedicated street lighting in high, you know, foot traffic crime areas, stuff like that. I mean, these are things that benefit the whole city. And there are things that I may think, oh, Ward Six needs all these things, but then Ward Seven needs something else. And so I think it's helping us see things as a big picture. As a city, I think it shows what the whole city values and what they're emphasizing that we should be doing. Because, you know, I could build Jason, you know, fifty million parks and, you know, butterfly gardens and pollinator gardens and all these things. But that's not what people want. So these are more like one-time capital improvement projects to help benefit the residents.
And Councilmember Foreman.
So what process?
It does sound capital-centered more than potentially program-centered. So what staff would be looking at, and I look to Mr. Francisco's box in Hollywood Squares to say that that could be an appropriation from, uh, capital designated dollars that come to us specifically reserved for capital purposes, as opposed to the other general fund fund balance, which council always wants to be conscious of stays above some level of comfort, council's level of comfort in the fund balance.
The only thing I would remind counsel about that is that remember that the capital fund is already below its mandated reserve. The general fund at least does have some available fund balance that you could use. The capital fund does not. If you were, if you were to take this out of the capital fund, then you'd have to cut some existing capital projects.
Thank you for that point, because I saw what was, yeah. So what process would you use? I mean, are these going to be guided ward meetings? Is it going to be the same format? Because as we saw with the appointment process, if it's not the exact same thing, people get a little upset. So, I mean, because I mentioned it, the, there's a lot of staff going through an innovation track training process. Daryl, you know what I'm speaking about with the Harvard training. They might actually have a model for this unless, I was wondering if you had something in mind, though.
So I posted when I I talked about it publicly because I think people have a little PTSD about proposing amendments from the dais. So I wanted to put it out there beforehand. Um, PBS, they showed a thing at this borough in New York. What they did was they held community meetings. So it was city staff, it was the council, they were going and they were talking, and the community members were the ones prioritizing and making the list. So it wasn't like councils appointing people to go do this. It's actually us. It's the government being involved, direct democracy with what the people want with their taxpayer dollars.
That sounds like a charrette process that you're envisioning. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peacock.
Uh, yeah, that charrette process is something I'm very familiar with and I think leads to really great results most of the time. I guess my question is kind of, do you envision each ward having a cap? So it's eight, I mean, divided by eight, one hundred and twenty-five thousand? Do you anticipate each ward basically having one hundred and twenty-five thousand not to exceed? Or would it kind of just be best idea wins?
That's something for us to discuss. In my mind, I'm not seeing it as every ward gets their own dollar amount. Trying to be all PC here. I. Every ward would be represented. Every ward would be putting things forward, and then the public is voting for all of these things. And so I don't know, like, council, this is what we can discuss on how we feel. Do we want to allocate it to the wards? It's not how I envisioned it. If you think that's going to be best and most equitable, then definitely let's have that conversation.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there was a right answer to my question. I was just kind of curious, you know, what we think the most, we talked a lot about equity tonight, so I want to make sure that every ward is represented fairly. And I think, you know, on paper, it seems like a pretty straightforward way to do it. But I I know that, you know, certain projects just cost more than others and certain needs are greater than others. So I'm not sure that we can make that determination without seeing some of the actual projects and ideas upfront. That's really all I had for right now.
Thank you. Okay, Council.
I'm sorry, you broke up. Did you call on me? Okay, I'm having a unstable internet connection as well, so we'll see how long this holds up. And so I have been really interested in learning a little bit more about participatory budgeting myself, because it's a term that's been used frequently in this past year from multiple constituent groups. And we've certainly heard about it at the budget hearings. And so I appreciate Councilmember Foreman bringing it to us because I did watch the PBS video that you posted, and I've also just looked into it a little bit. And what's interesting about this is that the idea and the concept of participatory budgeting has been around for years and actually originated in Brazil, I believe. But there are multiple municipalities across the United States that have done this. And I even inquired with council member, I mean, with City Manager Pyle to see if he'd served in any municipality that had used this as a, um, as a, as a process. And so the example that was given in the PBS video was New York, and they started a little bit bigger than Norman, but they started in just certain wards or districts, was my understanding, with a small amount of money. But over the years, it's grown to about forty-one million dollars that's allocated for this process in New York City. So I I like the idea, I like the idea of some kind of pilot project, but of course, the devil is always in the details. And what this seems to be completely dependent on is how successful we are at getting community interaction. And so that's the part that I haven't quite sorted out in my own mind yet of how that works because we, you know, all struggle with coming out of our post, in our post-pandemic world, we've really been hampered with doing ward meetings. And, you know, not everybody gets their information from social media. They depend on lots of other sources to be involved. And so I'm actually wondering if there isn't some sort of intersection, if we approve the Neighborhood Alliance, and as that gets off the ground, if that's not a vehicle to create, you know, neighborhood or community meetings across our wards and across the community, and maybe having like ward-specific, but then also part of a bigger conversation. And it does remind me a lot of the charrette process, because the key to this being successful is for our residents to be actively participating and prioritizing, you know, what projects that they think are important. So that's just a little bit of what I've learned about it so far. But I think it would be, you know, a really interesting idea to try to get just a different way of going about having our residents being involved, other than just being able to come to a budget hearing.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler.
Thanks. Um, so my questions are, I guess, a little bit more about the process. And it it seems like we would probably have to have some more discussions about kind of how this would get formulated in terms of the meetings and kind of representatives from each of the wards and kind of how the the process would kind of get put together. But I'm wondering, some things that are kind of floating through my mind is specifically the voting process, like how would citizens kind of vote through this structure? What does that look like? Is that just through these ward meetings and the community meetings in terms of like prioritizing stuff? Is, so it wouldn't be like a formal vote that would have to then go like through a formal process? It would just be through these, these community meetings, correct?
Well, I asked the city attorney about that. I wasn't sure if it was something that we would. I I'm afraid if we did it, just at the community level, people would accuse us of lying, et cetera. So I know that there are third-party voting options that we could have, that we could have come in. I don't know if this is a Cleveland County election, like, I'm sure the state would kill that in two seconds anyway. But I would want a formal voting process. So when each ward or however we chose to do it, the community came up with the projects, city staff prices them, we put them there, and then we vote, and then that's, that's how it'd go forward. But I I think it needs to be a very formal voting process.
Yeah. So would there be a cost associated with implementing that formal voting process that would come out of this money as well?
Yeah. So I, Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's thirty thousand dollars for a municipal election. So I couldn't imagine whatever we chose to do it costing that much.
Okay. Um, yeah, just trying to think through like what money out of this one million might already be allocated towards kind of the structure of creating the system, you know, that might be kind of chipped away from what we might have to then, you know, distribute out. Um, okay. And then my other kind of question, this might be for staff, is if we go through this process and, you know, we have our citizens kind of come to us, we figure out what the priorities are, we do this formal vote, would council then have to officially approve to appropriate these monies for these projects after citizens have voted? Like, what is the process for that?
So if the amendment is approved by the council, the appropriation would exist. It would just be a matter of depending on the nature and the priority of those projects identified by the community, which ones would need to be done under a formal bidding procedure and which ones might be small enough where they could be done under an informal bidding procedure. And depending on the scope and scale, some may require engineering work to be done or some right-of-way to be acquired. So every, every item on the list may have its own life and its own trajectory, just depending on the nature of the the items identified by the public.
Okay, yeah, sure. Just trying to understand the process so that I understand it, but then also so the public understands that, you know, this, this may be quite a lengthy process to kind of get through and to actually see some of these projects all the way to completion. You know, it's not just going to be like, we voted on this and then it gets, it gets done. But there, there might be some, you know, things that have to go out to bid, and there, there are some additional steps that might need to be taken through the city, through council, and things like that. So it's not just like a checkmark, woo, we voted on this, we've had our, our voting, our formal voting process, and then it, you know, it gets done. But also to hold us accountable, to say like, this is, this is the process and to be explaining that to citizens as we're going through that, like, this is how this is going to function if this, this, this gets approved. So, yeah, I'm just really kind of about process and how this is going to function and really being clear about what our intentions are and how this is gonna, gonna function. So those were kind of the two things that were kind of. Um, so those were kind of the two things that were kind of rattling around in my brain um just as I think about this. So thank you for the clarifications.
All right, Councilor Holman.
Thank you. I had uh similar questions as Councilor Schuler Hall um have asked as well. I uh, I think some pretty good ideas have been put out about how we could go forward with uh this proposal. Um, I think the, I kind of like the idea of a divided amongst wards type situation. Um, we've talked to council for years, has talked about various council members individually about. Having a budget that they could take to their ward residents instead of. We have ward meetings to talk about projects we already have that we need their support to get funded. Uh, we've had, we've, I've had tons of those meetings in my ward over the years where I've gone to the public and said, this is what we have. Do you have any questions about it? We're going to need your support with a vote or something like that. But never had the ability to go have a series of ward meetings where we say, hey, I've got a budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, to be used in Ward Seven. Um, what issues are important to you in Ward Seven? Cause we address a lot of citywide issues and, and thankfully, we do have a lot of people thinking about citywide issues. But um it would be kind of nice to be able to go to ward residents and say, I've got a specific budget. What type of things specifically in Ward Seven are important to you? Um, that with this budget realistically that we could um address. And since it is a pilot program, being able to set an example and then go from there. We had meetings, we got your feedback, we did this project, it's finished, look at, look at how it turned out. Um, or maybe it's multiple pro- little projects, uh maybe it's a basketball goal at one of the parks that's missing. Maybe it's, you know, anything that people might come up with. Um, and I really do like the idea of a charrette process, you know, like where it'd be like kind of a. A beginning kickoff where it's one big meeting and everybody's invited, there's pictures, there's bulletin boards, people can write their ideas on. Um, I, you know, identify what ward you're from uh and kind of have a kickoff like that. And then maybe all the council members, we have a series of individual ward meetings. Um, where we say, hey, we've got, again, we've got this budget, tell us what you think, we're here to listen. Um, and uh come back, you know, and go from there. So I do like that idea. Um, I think there could be value to in having one big pot of money that uh we have series of. Public meetings and discourse about, and then we decide on one big project that we all like. Or ten big projects that we all like citywide. So I think there's several uh potential good paths that we could take here. And I, I am excited about the potential of this um and discussing it further about how we would proceed. Um, I do have some questions still about the beginning part. When I'm, if I was clear about Anthony said the uh million for this. And then the money for crisis response to budget it as a care, as a budget item in this coming budget. To add on to what we've already budgeted from this past one. Um, that. Those coming out of the same pot of money. Um, how much? How much would we have if we, uh, Anthony, I'm sorry, if we did a million for this and we do the um allocation for the crisis. Response that we talked about. Um, that from what I understood from what you said earlier, that would take us below our minimum.
It would take and call it coincidence or whatever, but if you, if you used. Um, six hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars from. What was the carried over um re- reserve of fund balance for community outreach plus this million? If you look at the bottom line on the general fund summary on page fifty-seven. It becomes dangerous, I mean, one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So you'd be about forty-nine thousand dollars into the negative of your mandated operational reserve.
That is insanely sharp shooting. That's amazing. And I, yeah, I guess uh literally coincidental because the uh million dollar um. Budget proposal um wasn't part of the conversation that led up to uh everything on the list so far. So i- if it could be adjusted a little bit, I'm sure Mr. Francisco could make it fit like a glove.
So Darrell puts too much confidence in me because I don't put that much confidence in myself to be that exact in those projections. And again, as I stated earlier, that's dangerously low.
Yeah, um, that would be my only concern there um is getting, you know, right there with our minimum. Um, maybe that's what the minimum is for, cause so we don't actually hit the very bottom, um, but we want to stay above that minimum. Maybe we try to find a way not to go fifty thousand in the, in the hole and keep it exactly even perhaps. Um, and maybe, you know, some of this funding we, we plan to be receiving, we can. We can use to fill that gap perhaps, but uh I do support both of these proposals as it is, as we've discussed right now. Unless um I hear something drastically different from my ward. Um, uh, but what I have heard so far. Um, over the last year and the things we've discussed, I do like these ideas a lot. I do want to find a way to accomplish this. I don't want to put our general fund in, you know, further trouble. But uh I think these are reasonable uh reasonable requests uh to, to move forward with. So. Um, thank you.
Thank you, council member. I'm going to throw it out there. What if we only did five hundred thousand for the pilot? We don't even have a process figured out. I just want to point that out. Like, seems like for a pilot, we could.
I mean, we were contemplating giving almost a million dollars for like three houses, so. A million.
Wow, so many flavors and you choose salty. Councilmember Hall.
Um, I just wanted to um circle back just on um process really. I mean, the, the dollar amounts might need to be negotiable for some of the reasons that we've already mentioned. But um, so. I, I think we can, you know, look at it from two different ways, but you know, to create. Um, equity, the idea of having ward specific um funding. Um, maybe has some value. And if I understand this correctly, I mean, it really is all driven by the suggestions from our residents. Not some predetermined plan of, oh, here's ten projects, which ones do you like? Um, this really is generated um in a similar fashion as going through the charrette process of. You know, coming together in uh the spirit of community and um coming up with very specific needs. For neighborhoods and or wards and um letting members of the neighborhoods and members of our community. Really sort that out with one another and um then it's up to, up to them to prioritize. What is the most important? So um I do see some value, even though it would, you know, the, the power of the dollar might. Might be reduced a little bit if it was just by ward, but I think the process and, and how that gets laid out. Um, would be really, really important. And I don't want you to make any final thoughts until I throw out my last little request. So.
Uh, council member Hall.
Was also going to be pointed out, well, just real quick, other people have suggestions too, and we've just taken all of it. Just pointing that out. So sorry, city manager pile.
Oh, no, um, on the uh mobile response, the, the conversations uh in development. With the fire department and the fire response. Um, in that line of thinking. The ability to respond not from one single uh vehicle, but from all fire stations. In the opportunity to speed the response, depending on what side of town you're at, uh during the event of a behavioral health crisis. Uh, we think speeds the response with medical personnel CIT trained, not in a. One point two million dollar fire truck, but in a light uh rescue vehicle that could be a one-ton crew cab. Pickup truck with paramedics uh CIT trained in that response. We believe provides a, a faster uh professional medical response from locations that may be far more. Uh. Realistic in terms of getting to the person in crisis the fastest. The fact that our personnel are already um on payroll in the stations with equipment that we already own. We believe we can provide that um response um inside the existing appropriation. Uh, there could come some specialty equipment and or training that we believe could very well come from. Uh, ARPA funding as well. And right now, we're going over state statutes. Uh, to figure out under what circumstances a police officer is required to be there under state law. Um, and then what that uh response looks like in each fire station. Currently, we respond in similar fashion under um hazardous materials incidents. Where we have personnel trained in this subject matter at each fire station, allowing them to respond quickly. And then bring in the additional uh resources they need to manage the crisis at hand. So um in what we're bringing you, um in that initial appropriation, we have. Um, beat the bushes in search of what would be the equivalent under the cahoots program. Of that nonprofit entity that responds uh on behalf of the city of Eugene, a nonprofit entity known as Whitebird. Um, and, and right now, they are staffed to a level to be able to respond about three days a week. Um, we don't have that entity or an entity like it uh anywhere available to us. That could respond uh twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We think uh what we are working on is going to provide us the most reliable response. Um, with resources already allocated. Uh, we do respond to an awful lot of medical aid calls on an annual basis. And we would um highlight and specify the training for those medical issues, those medical responses. Where we know the nature of the medical call is that of behavioral health crisis. So you may have some flexibility in how much you wish to um appropriate of the six hundred thousand that was set aside. Uh, in the current fiscal year budget for that uh activity as well.
All right. Thank you, city manager pile. Councilor Schuler.
Sure, I just, um, uh, city manager pile, I just want to clarify that what you just stated was that. We're not allocating any more funds to the fire department to, to do this, correct?
Um, it is currently not been determined uh that any additional funding would be required. Uh, but that's what the fire department uh and all of our fire administrators are working on as we speak. Hope to be able to bring you a glimpse of what that solution looks like here in the next uh couple of weeks.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to re-budget that for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and so we're still in the process of trying to figure out what that system might look like with, you know, deploying. Um, those types of services through our fire department, correct?
Yes, but those dollars would remain to you available in fund balance. You could appropriate all or a portion of it. You can absolutely take that action, which would put it in the budget, um, making it legal to spend. And we would just bring you program uh items to approve to be spent from those dollars, should you choose to appropriate it. So all the flexibilities in the hands of the council, you can let it sit in fund balance or you can choose to appropriate all six hundred thousand or some portion thereof.
And we're currently talking about the fun, the six hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-one that we have not yet appropriated, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so not, yeah, cause I know the conversation earlier was kind of surrounding that, that money. That is currently sitting in fund balance and then whether we want to choose to can, to appropriate and a money within the fiscal year twenty-two. That is extra money moving forward. Um, and I think we're just trying to figure out what the clarification is on. That move, that money move moving forward for something like, like a mobile crisis unit or, you know, other, you know, community planning. Type funds, because obviously we, we haven't allocated that money yet. But um I think we're trying to figure out what is the path forward and what options we have. Um, and I think. I think that's where some of the clarification, we're just trying to understand um where all of that is. And since we're coming up on the end of fiscal year twenty-one and we have not, we have that six hundred thousand dollars that has not been appropriated. Um, that puts us in a, a, an interesting spot as we're thinking through this fiscal year twenty-two budget. Um, and so, um, yeah, I think, I think we're just trying to understand the, the, the bigger picture here.
Absolutely understandable and the, the thought that uh Mr. Mr. Francisco would like us to all keep with us is. In our fiduciary responsibility uh as the council who gets to appropriate those dollars, just to be mindful of what that bottom line looks like. Uh, above your minimum required fund balance.
Okay, I'm sure that other council members have um similar issues to mine, so I'll um defer to that.
I want to address Councilmember Schuler's direct question though. And again, this is what I was talking about in response to Councilmember Studdly earlier. Remember that the difference between the reserve in fiscal year twenty-one. And the fund balance in fiscal year twenty-two is only that you have designated a reserve for community outreach. In fiscal year twenty-one. That ends at the end of fiscal year twenty-one. And those funds just become a part of the unreserved general fund balance that council can appropriate. No more money has been identified. It's just that the reserve designation has expired.
Right, I, yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
All right, council member Studdly.
Okay, so I'm a little bit concerned with what Mr. Pyle is saying with the fire department. So did we at some point collectively decide that this is the route that we're going, that the fire department is going to be? Our mobile crisis response unit or where are you getting this from?
So we, we, the council has not uh made that determination. Um, what staff has been able to identify is the lack of that third party entity to respond. And to be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So what staff is preparing to bring to council for your consideration. Is that solution that is an unarmed, non-police response with critically, with critical incident training. To address those individuals in behavioral health crisis.
Okay, but what about the medical um aspect of it? People who have been training in years for mental health response, who went to school for this. Because we're still moving it from one department to another, which doesn't solve the actual issue that your community has brought to you. So my concern is that we're still talking about CIT certification for a fire department, which is not the same. As a healthcare provider. So I know you had mentioned that your city staff had looked at other agencies. But like with any job or with any new thing that we're building, why wouldn't you set forth a requirement? Of what that position looks like and post the job ad and then get people to respond to that. Versus trying to seek out an entire agency, because I have personally been approached by now three separate individuals. Who do have medical healthcare training, who are willing to participate in a pilot program for this. So I think that by only focusing on the fire department or agencies within Norman. You're missing out on the big picture of this entire program, which is taking this out of the police. Ten percent of our calls from our Norman Police Department right now are for mental healthcare or mental crisis. And this is the biggest number one call that we get from our Norman Police Department. So if we're taking these funds or taking these calls from them, then they don't need the funding that they have. It would put it into a different department that's not the Norman Fire Department. It's a cahoots type thing. Which, oh, by the way, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's currently talks with the federal government for cities who adopt these types. Where they're going to get federal funding for that. So that could be an additional funding source for us. Uh, but I really am concerned about your lack of um searching. Or your city staff's lack of searching outside of an agency. Um, we also have looked at or have talked to or considered OU as uh hosting a private program. Uh, have you talked to them? Uh have you talked to them at all?
Uh I have done some outreach and have not received a response. Uh from the entity that deals with students in behavioral health crisis as that's. Um a population with some of the same needs as other members of our community. Uh city staff did not uh begin the process of creating job descriptions to hire. Um additional personnel to address uh behavioral health crisis. And all of the models that were brought up during all of the conversation, they all involved uh. Third-party providers to work uh in concert with uh other uh first responders and healthcare providers. Um so we have not gone out to seek individuals uh to bring on and expand city staff to provide that level of service. Our our fire department personnel, uh we've got a a pretty good list of people who are paramedics. And also certified in advanced life uh safety where they are allowed to push. Uh meds and IVs and they can, they can deliver a pretty high level of uh medical response. And do respond in a number of uh our current crisis calls. Uh but unarmed and non-police, uh we have not uh set out to establish job descriptions. Uh council does uh regulate the number of positions that the city of Norman. Uh satisfies and fulfills uh council if you would like staff to uh. Bring to you job descriptions for your consideration to get into uh the behavioral health business. Uh that you're, it it's a brand-new effort, we'd be happy to explore that with you.
If we're doing this as a pilot program and we're trying to mirror what's going on in Eugene, Oregon with the Kahoots program. That saves the city money in the end, um I definitely think that it's something that we could look at and. Um you know, even their model, they do use EMTs to help go side by side with them, which is fine. But um they don't use the police. They call the police in one point seven percent of all of their calls that they go out on. If they can't get any type of resolution or where they need to go. So um it's still not a uh, they're still not going out there with the police. Um with that said, I would like to make or say that the amendment that I proposed. Since we clearly don't have enough money in the general funds. Um the police administration budget has increased from four to seven positions. Which adds an additional five hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars to the police budget this year. And I would like to make a resolution that we don't add any additional administration to the police budget this year. And instead, we take that money and use towards this additional money for a mobile crisis response team. So we can use the additional money that we got last year in twenty twenty one and then set aside another five hundred thousand this year. Uh in our budget to appropriate for um a crisis response unit.
A component we will need substantial clarification on uh in the creation of the mobile response unit. Um those elements anticipated um to be a component of that response unit. Um right now, uh we would say the the entities that we are aware of that would provide that service. Um they are fire personnel assigned to us already in the budget. Um in that Kahoots program, we recognize that uh the nonprofit. Um with whom the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield have contracted with to provide that unarmed, non-police response. Uh to folks in a behavioral health crisis are still only available um for a limited number of hours per week. And we were under the impression that the desired uh response would be available to members of our community. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, in that we recognize uh behavioral health crises take place at all hours of the day and night. And they do not respect weekends or holidays. So our ability to make sure we can respond whenever that call for service comes in. Was uh our our primary concern in working towards solutions.
I think that there's definitely a lot more opportunity for us to look outside of just the police department. And creatively think about how we can do this. Um there's quite a few citizens in our community who have already put together a program. Based off of Kahoots and other models across the US that I really think that we should consider looking at. Um and not just focus on the fire part. But with that said. Um what is the reason that we're increasing the administration and the police budget from seven? Uh from four to to seven administrate uh administrative roles in the police department?
That was a transfer, that was a transfer of three people from staff services to administration. There are no new positions. It was just a reorganization within the department.
Well, it was an increase of five hundred and twenty seven, five hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. So what, what is that money for then?
It's a reduction of the same amount from other police department budgets. They were just consolidated in the administrative budget.
There'll be an offsetting decrease in the staff services division.
So then there's no increase in the police budget from twenty one to twenty two?
Uh no additional personnel. The increase covers increased costs in workers' compensation. Uh and uh adjustments to the salary schedule for uh merit increases and uh pension and healthcare costs.
Okay, well, I would still like to propose that we have five hundred thousand dollars taken from the police budget this year. Because it's still the number one budgeted item in our, in our entire city's budget. And we really have a community that's reaching out, asking for these other services. And I think that we owe it to them to at least start this. And if we're not allocating this money year over year, then we're ignoring what they're asking us for. So obviously, our general fund is tapped out. So my next option is to look at the biggest funded budget item in our city's budget was the police, which is the police budget. So I am proposing that we move five hundred thousand dollars from the police budget to be allocated to mental health crisis unit.
Thank you. I also want to thank city staff for looking at more options than just Kahoots. Because it's literally not the only one. I know mayors across the nation who are tapping into existing resources to help address this problem that we're all hearing about. So I appreciate the opportunity to have options, especially.
I would also like to point out, though, you made the comment that Kahoots does not operate twenty-four seven. They do operate twenty-four seven. They have a clinic that has limited hours. But Kahoots does operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So I'm not sure where you got your information from. Or if we're looking at two different things, but um they do run twenty-four seven.
Uh I do believe uh that the program answers the phone twenty-four seven. Members from the White Bird nonprofit um don't have enough uh resources available. To participate in the response twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, but those response calls are met with other personnel. So that nonprofit mental health care professional group that we, we don't have a similar mechanism here in Norman. Um that's the component of the Kahoots response that is not um part of the response twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That is our understanding of the current limitations of the White Bird component to the Kahoots response.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Uh I do appreciate the, the idea um behind using the fire stations. I do think that makes sense. They are spread around, around the city. Um and would, I agree, provide the quickest response. Um my concern about using the fire department without increased personnel and funding is that the fire department. Already responds to nearly five hundred calls a week, at least according to the weekly report. Um it's in, I think only about a handful are usually actually fires. Um the fire department spends most of their time on medical calls, car accidents, um things like that. So I would have some concern about um switching our, the response of this to just the fire department alone. Um unless we were increasing the funding for the fire department to include a position that's specifically for this. Uh but I would mainly using the fire stations as a base is a good idea. Um but not entirely sure that using the fire department solely anyway for this is, is necessarily a good idea. For not increasing the funding for the fire department. Um I think there could be an opportunity if we can identify that third party as you're talking about. That maybe they're working with our fire department when they're not available. Whatever it may be, if it's in the same situation as Kahoots. Um that they're working together to respond to these, uh since our fire department does have medical training and all things like that. But I think having people that have specific training and mental health issues is really what we're needing here. Um and they may not all be medical in the sense that a paramedic or someone trained in that way is needed. That we might need a psychologist or um something like that that has that type of experience and training. Um to respond. Um and so um I do appreciate that. Staff looking at that, I think that can be a component of this, but I'm not sure it's the entire component that we're looking for necessarily. Um and so I, I do want to see us continue to look at uh options in the community for. Any groups out there that are willing to help, help us accomplish this goal um that we've heard from constituents. And uh over the last year, over the last several years, really, mental health has been a long time issue in the state of Oklahoma. Um and this state has, the state government has really failed um us in so many ways. And it's not necessarily even a political party issue. The, both parties have controlled the state government in my lifetime. And in my lifetime, the state government has done very little um and actually reduced what they do seemingly, no matter who the governor is. Um uh budget and priority when it comes to mental health. And instead, we are a state that turned to incarceration as a way to address um. Mental health issues, homelessness, anything's basically if we don't like it, let's just put it in jail. We don't want to deal with it. That's been the philosophy of the state of Oklahoma and cities like Norman have had to deal with this for many years. We've had a mental health institute that is um throughout the decades been reduced to almost nothing. And those people haven't gone away, the people that needed those services haven't gone away. And um you know, what we've heard is that we do need a different response than just armed. Uh police to respond to those type situations for the sake of our community, but also for our police department as well. The, the burden of those types of calls, the volume of those calls. Um um you know, put a significant burden on the police department and the officers themselves. And so having a separate unit that's specifically trained in crisis management response. It can work in tandem, work with our fire department. Um if the police department is needed, if it's that type of situation, they would be there. But um I think what we've heard is, what I've heard is that the focus we want is, is on uh. Mental health, mobile crisis response. Uh but I do like the idea of incorporating the, our fire stations. And how they are absolutely in a position to reach people the quickest. Um so what that looks like, if there's, you know, multiple units uh that are stationed to each one. Or whichever ones are strategically the best to use. Maybe it's not all nine of them, but maybe. You know, maybe it's eight and nine and seven and three or something like that, you know, but uh. Um I do want us to, again, to keep reaching out, try to find some of the, uh like Councilmember Studdly said. People out there that are willing to help us with this type of pilot program um to prove whether it can work here or not, like we want it to. Um and get buy-in from, you know, even more people in the community uh going forward. Um so that, that would be my suggestion is that we do, you know, kind of a mix of both those things, but we uh. Uh I do appreciate it and I want us to continue pushing forward um with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman, uh you, you bring up a couple of points that I think.
I mean, maybe there's space in the.
Just, just uh the realization that what you have witnessed um in the state of Oklahoma is absolutely the same scenario. That is witnessed coast to coast and we have seen over the years, people who used to be cared for. By uh behavioral health institutions in each state. As those budgets shrank and those facilities were closed, that population became part of the prison population. Which is the most expensive, worst outcome solution to people dealing with behavioral health issues. Um and then over the last decade or so, uh jail crowding and overcrowding. And those issues that wind up with the release of uh individuals not being held on violent offenses. And a lot of that population uh has become homeless. The ability to potentially prepare an RFP um for individuals. And I would, I would look to the city attorney to help us structure. Uh the nature of the individual or entity who could respond to a request for proposal to say. Is, is there an ability of people with ex-licensure or whatever the city attorney uh recognizes? We need to include in, in a list of, of uh assets and attributes that an individual or a, a, a company. An entity could bring to the table to participate in part of that response um could be very valuable. So that's a thing we can work on and I can ask the city attorney um and the fire chief and the police chief to. What, we know who, who helps out in these situations in our community on a regular basis. Uh the mayor and I participated in a presentation to the International City Managers Association. In which the findings of the mayor's task force were presented to city managers across the country. And in that conversation, some of those helping us to present are some of our existing nonprofits. And in our conversation after the presentation about uh what's your staffing level like? And what is your ability to participate with us in responses to these calls for service? And the answer was, we don't have enough uh people to fit the mission that we're supposed to satisfy. On a daily basis. We really do not have access to enough bodies who are critically trained uh in Norman or in the metro area. To provide the city of Norman with that kind of response team. So that's when we began to really recognize we were up against a wall because that, that other entity or those individuals. Um were not present uh as part of the group that currently helps us respond in these critical times. So uh we'd be happy to prepare an RFP and see what kind of talent uh is out there either corporately or individually. To be able to participate in a response and see how many hours of that response we could put together with existing, with talent. Uh in the neighborhood, not existing yet, but could be assembled.
Thank you. I'd be curious to see what the Women's Resource Center does because they've always got someone on call. So I think we can keep fleshing it out. Councilmember Foreman.
So I work at Police Department and my agency does a lot of transfers to the most desirable facility in the state. And that's in our backyard here with Griffin. I don't know if we've reached out to them or Norman Regional. But I would like to continue to have conversations with who we have locally that can kind of help us. And then my second thing, yes, no answer, I don't know. But I've had a few people message me who are still confused about the six hundred thousand dollars. So six hundred thousand, we'll say six hundred thousand FY twenty one, July first, it's gone. But we're going to reallocate again. We're nodding six hundred thousand plus six hundred thousand. Yes or no?
No.
Thank you, because some people are.
Fiscal year, fiscal year twenty one, you have general fund balance.
Yeah.
Reserved for community outreach. July first, you have general fund balance unreserved. But still, it's only council that can appropriate that fund balance.
Right, thank you. No, some people were messaging me confused, thinking it was going to be six hundred plus six hundred. I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Okay, well, I think um Councilmember Holman summarized it nicely. I um our, our, our problem with um comparing ourselves to. And or being able to set ourselves up with the Kahoots program is, I think, been identified as we don't. Um have an entity that is um comparable or um we haven't identified who that entity could be. Um in Norman, and I think there might be some possibilities there. So um include me in um the group that definitely supports. Um using uh resources that we did allocate for community services to come up with some kind of solution. For um, you know, what we're calling the mobile crisis unit, uh mobile response crisis. For um, you know, what we're calling the mobile crisis unit, uh, mobile response crisis unit, so I think. The fire department option is actually sort of a creative. Um, first step towards that because our firefighters are all. Trained first responders and EMTs, and that is actually the majority of the calls that they go on already. Um, so what's missing, I think, is the behavioral health piece is what we're talking about, and um, how we. How we can put together. A group of people or another kind of collaborative entity that can support. Um, the behavioral health piece and, and that part of managing um, a behavioral health crisis. Um, that fire, the firefighters may not um, have the training just yet, or we may be able to. Look into, you know, additional training there, to sort of triage where they're going next, but they absolutely. Are in a position to be first responders and have Mstat right behind them for medical emergencies, so that takes care of. The medical. Piece, um, it's the behavioral health piece that's missing, and I think. Um, you know, I definitely wanna keep find, trying to find solutions to providing that collaborative support. Um, for the different kinds of responses and crises that we've already know exists and that are identified, so. I like the um. You know, unarmed um, firefighters, uh, they're twenty-four seven, we're covered twenty-four seven, no problem with that first response. It's just what the supportive collaborative piece is going to look like to um, slide in right behind there depending on. You know, what the issue may be. Um, so um. That, that part, I think, is, you know, one step in the right direction, but I think we're missing. The other half of the piece that we still need to flesh out. So that's just what I wanted to throw in. I think Councilmember Holman covered everything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Uh, thank you. Um, to, I, that's what I was trying to get out was behavioral health. As I kept saying, mental health, but behavioral health as well, it's the other part that I was trying, trying to include there. Um, that I agree, I think that's the part we're kinda missing there, uh, when we talk about the response. Um, one of the questions was. Um, lights and siren, if we have. A response unit that is based out of the fire department, or even if it's not. Uh, like, does, does cahoots, I don't recall seeing lights. And siren on their vans. Um, and I don't know if it'd be envisioned that that's what would be used in this case. I could understand if they needed to get somewhere quickly because of emergency. Having lights and sirens might be beneficial, uh, but that could be a. Thing, the lights and sirens. I would have some concern about sending that type of response. That if somebody that's having a problem, either mentally, mental health or behavioral health, that the lights and sirens aspect could. Be an issue, so I was, had some question about that, how that would be envisioned, but also. There was a question I saw in the chat. About state law requiring police officers. State law requires police officers to be the ones that take people into, into be evaluated for crisis, uh, maybe. Could provide some clarification on that.
Just Walker, do you have that handy? Yeah, we, we are um, aware of state statutes in Oklahoma. Uh, that under certain circumstances, a police officer is, is required. Um, in, in, counselor, if you can clarify when those circumstances are present.
Generally speaking, anytime you're taking someone into custody. Whether it's custody to take them to jail or custody to take them to Griffin or Red Rock to be evaluated as an EOD. It is required that, that it be done by a police, police officer under state law. And so anytime you take someone into custody, you're not going to be able to take the police officer out of the equation. They have to be there to, to take someone into custody. And deliver them to the appropriate treatment facility or whatever the case might be.
So um, so like in the movies, if you get involuntary commit, involuntarily committed. In a white van just shows up and two big guys and white, uh, you know, nurses outfits get out and they. Throw you in the van, that's not allowed in Oklahoma, that would have to be the police that would come and do that. Is that the way I understand that, basically?
Correct. That's, that's correct, and that's about in every state, including the cahoots program.
Okay. So I think what. What I've heard mostly is that we want. A different first response than the police being the only option to respond to first. Um, I can understand, maybe to answer maybe the question I saw in the chat was. That this solution responds to these calls initially. And if it escalates to a point where someone does have to be taken in due to state law, that's when. Police would be called in, I assume, but I think what a lot of people have been saying is they. Want a different option for the initial response, um, instead of only having the option of sending. An armed uh, police officer or something of, of that matter, so. But yeah, I appreciate the clarification on what the state law says about that, that's very helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
I just wanna make the point that if we had an actual healthcare provider on scene, then you wouldn't have to transport them necessarily to a mental health. Facility because they'd be able to get the help that they need right there at their home or location. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands up right now. We're obviously not voting tonight. This is an opportunity to have conversations and. Hear it all out. If there are no other comments about number nine participatory budging. Or Councilmember Studley's, I'm gonna move on, could I freeze again? Uh, let's move on to other council members' suggestions. If, what I had said was if there's no other comments on the other items, okay. Councilmember Hall. You're muted.
I will be so happy to not uh, have to worry about muting and unmuting next week. So in person, here I come. And I will make this brief, so I've been really working on this um, for over a week with uh, back and forth with city staff. And it is in reference to our um. Warming shelter, which has been renamed the emergency shelter. Um, and just briefly, as you all know, this was the second year that we were able to. Um, provide um, a warming shelter over the winter months. And we've learned some things um, from last year to this year. Um, we were open in December and were slated to close on March thirty-first. And what we have discovered two years in a row is that um. The occupancy um, of the warming shelter, now known as the emergency shelter. Um, does not correlate with the temperature, um, so um. Obviously, it's a great idea to have a place for people to come out of the cold. During the winter months, but what we found this spring was that we were actually increasing occupancy. Um, at the warming shelter, at, excuse me, at the emergency shelter, and so um, with the help of city staff, we were able to. Identify funding to keep the shelter open through June, um, the end of June. And um, I wanna point out to all of you that we have a lease on the building that we are obligated to pay the rent through. October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, so we're paying five thousand five hundred dollars a month, whether anybody is occupying the building or not. So that uh, portion of this is already taken care of. I think um, funding a, a shelter down the road is going to be an option, and it's certainly something I'm gonna be bringing forward. Um, as we consider um, ARP funding at our, at our um, retreat in July. But um, what we have discovered is that we've seen increased occupancy over the three months that we've remained open. Um, there continues to be a need for a low barrier shelter. Um, as, as being demonstrated by the continued use, and the only other night shelter option in Norman right now is the Salvation Army, which is a high barrier. Shelter, so um. What I'm proposing um, as an amendment is just temporary funding to keep the emergency shelter open. Uh, for the months of June, July, August, I mean, I'm sorry, July, August, September and October until the end of our lease in October. Um, and this would amount to um. Uh, about twenty thousand dollars a month for uh, security staff, um, that must be on premises. We also have case managers that are uh, available at the shelter every single night. We've seen two hundred and thirty-six unduplicated um, individuals so far. Uh, this year, and our occupancy at this point is holding pretty steady. And like I said, increased over the colder months, which has um, been a good thing. So um, the reason I think that this is um, important is because. It's a, a temporary in nature until we get the results of the home-based study that we've invested a hundred thousand dollars in. Um, and it's a temporary fix until we have more data to support what a permanent option and a permanent location. Um, might look like. Um, I'm personally hesitant to move forward on permanent solutions until we have a full understanding. Of what we're expecting to see in the home-based study. Um, they're moving along at a pretty brisk clip. I think we're expecting some preliminary results over the summer. Um, and I think we're expecting to see some final results in the fall. So um. If we, if we aren't able to do this, then we are closing a low barrier shelter, we're. Uh, not having access to case managers. Um, at a time of day when people might be able to come and take advantage of having case management and, and a place to. Um, have a safe shelter at night. So uh, what this would be, would be twenty thousand dollars a month. Uh, times four, for a total of eighty thousand dollars. And I had submitted that earlier this afternoon, and it just didn't make it to um, our. Our list of nine things.
It would seem that since this is a one-time cost, tell me if I freeze again, that uh, this would be perfect for ARP funds, which is designated to help people. Who've had a rough go of it.
Yeah, well.
On top of all the other things.
Yeah, the problem with that is just the timing, because that originally was the, kind of the direction that we were working, so the timing of all of this. Is we're not even meeting until the middle of July. Um, if we don't take some temporary action for the month of July. Um, it's likely that we'll have to shut it down, so um, we, for. Looking forward for next year and for more permanent solutions that will intersect with, you know, what our home-based study shows. I think ARP funds are gonna be um, great for that. We've been also able to use um, grant funding through ESG. And CDVG through um. Um, HUD, and um, we've exhausted those fun, funds for now, but we should know better about what's going to be available. For the winter season next year, so this would just be a temporary fix to allow us to keep operating. Um, until we can get a better idea of um. You know, what we're gonna need for a longer-term solution and what that looks like, and um. What our funding sources are gonna be, and I feel pretty confident that there's gonna be some grant funding sources, but the timing. The timing is all wrong for what we need for July, August, September and October.
I mean, we can draft a resolution. That's what it is, right?
Yes, ma'am. Procedurally, you could remember that council's action. Was to table the appropriation of the ARP funds for the Emergency Operations Center. But if you wanted to take up an additional appropriation of eighty thousand dollars or whatever. Um, you could do that at next council meeting or, or whenever, I. I'm fairly certain that this fits into the guidelines, but of course, we would defer to the city attorney for a final determination about that.
And so the only thing deferred a hundred percent is the EOC.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Peacock.
I'm just wondering if we have the flexibility to kind of do maybe two months through an appropriation and then. Clean up the remainder with ARP money, given us kinda aligning with the timeline as Councilmember Hall was kind of alluding to there.
I say yes, but I don't know if that's correct.
You can do it either way, it's totally just, just tell us what you wanna do, I mean. Forty thousand of ARP money that we have an appropriation item next meeting, forty thousand in a budget amendment, we could do it that way, either, either way.
So just to clarify on that, in working with um, city staff and in conversations with the city manager. Um, I was choosing the budget amendment amount because I think what we learned from last week was. A desire on the part of council to have a comprehensive look. At um, how we're going to um, use the ARP funds um, at the council retreat in July, so. That's my hesitancy about going that route and just hoping that, you know, we can. Um, find some temporary funding uh, to get us through, and again, let me just point out that. Uh, we would be losing some ground if we have to close it, and we're also going to be paying um, fifty-five hundred dollars a month for an empty building.
Thank you.
I certainly support the idea.
Councilmember Foreman.
I was just gonna ask if we use like general fund money or whatever, could we reimburse ourselves with the RP money? Yes, no?
Anthony, in, in certain functions related to debt instruments, if the council makes its intentions known. That it intends to reimburse the general fund when those dollars are appropriated. I don't know what that mechanism's called, but I've seen it done in debt instruments. I don't know if a similar function. Uh, might be available to us in this situation.
No, tax anticipation notes are clearly um, not an approved use of ARPA funds. A lot of cities can issue at short-term debt like that without a vote of the people. But, but it was clearly anticipated that that was not an approved use of ARPA funds.
So an appropriation would be appropriate, uh, whether it be from ARP funds or from the general fund. And either one can take place next Tuesday night. Uh, wherever council is comfortable, both would be appropriate uses of either general fund dollars or ARPA dollars.
And what I, what I heard was a consensus that you wanted to, to do a budget amendment from the general fund for eighty thousand, is that correct?
After going around, around um, for the last week or so to try to figure this out and the timing of all of it, that would be um. My preferred suggestion.
What does that do with our, our reserve that's? Our hard cushion that's slowly dwindling quickly?
Assuming that the uh. Amendment number nine is also prove you'd be a million ninety, a million and eighty thousand dollars. Into an a million six reserve, so you'd have about. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars of remaining unreserved fund balance in excess of your minimum. Was that clear? Tell me if it was not.
So it's cutting into the six hundred thousand that was already designated from twenty twenty-one.
Well, my understanding was that the proposed amendment there was to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from the police budget. To the mobile response unit, so that would not have an impact on the, on the fund balance.
Right, but I thought you said that from twenty twenty-one, the six hundred thousand dollars that was allocated then was held in a fund. But in twenty twenty-two, it's gonna be released into the general fund.
I, I still think I'm, I'm not making clear. That the reserve of general fund balance for community outreach in fiscal twenty-one. Is remaining in the general fund balance. It is just no longer reserved for community outreach. It is unreserved and available for whatever council um, chooses, so.
And that's, that's included in the one point six million in the general fund, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I don't hate the idea of splitting it, like Councilperson Peacock suggested, but then we're. Basically guaranteeing we're gonna do what we might as well do, if that's what we wanna do with ARP funds to serve some of our most vulnerable citizens. So I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to be very cautious with our, our budget, which I hope we all are. You know, good stewards of taxpayer dollars, all that fun stuff, so.
So.
Where's everyone at?
One of the, one of the things that came up, I think either at the finance committee meeting or just in the last couple of weeks or so, that. Um, I know we were able to take a look at. or just in the last couple of weeks or so, that I know we were able to take a look at last year was any of those, I'm, I'm trying to look for the pennies in, in the, in the change in the couch right now. And so, and eighty thousand dollars is, you know, a relatively modest sum in many ways. And but we had talked about taking a look at some of the projects that are closed out but may still have some reserve or some money still allocated. And I'm not sure if we actually got that list or if we've already come through all of that.
We have not gotten through that list. That list still exists. But remember that the capital sales tax is dedicated for capital projects. You could not use those capital funds to pay rent for the emergency shelter. This, that would have to be out of the general fund.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Well, Councilwoman Foreman is not going to like my next suggestion, but maybe reduce the pilot program just a smidge to make that work. Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I support the idea overall, but I think my heartburn is also just doing, you know, doing damage to the general fund, the bottom line. I mean, if we had the money, clear as day, I'd have no problem supporting it. I just wonder what kind of, what creative ways we can get to fund this, if it's a half and half split or if it's, I, I hate to defer it all until we go on a retreat, but I just, you know, I know, like you said, eighty thousand dollars is a, is a modest sum of money. But having said all that, I do support the idea.
Councilmember Studley.
Isn't some of what Foreman was wanting or talking about using the money for more of like capital expenditures? So could we not pull, does it all have to come from the general fund, Foreman, or can we pull some from a different part of the budget?
Anthony, you said that our capital fund was negative already. Is that where you put us negative? Anthony?
Where you will see in the capital fund balance available for new projects. And remember, we talked about this when, when we had the study session related to capital. That available for net, for new projects number is negative. So, so you don't have available funds in the capital fund. Now, I know this may also be confusing, but you can use the general fund for capital projects. It's just that you can't use the capital fund for non-capital projects.
Well, you had mentioned that whenever Lee Hall asked about if there was any projects that were done but were still budgeted, and you said that we couldn't use general funds for capital. So in the capital budget, is there anything that's, that's almost done that we budgeted for that, that money could be used for something else?
My understanding of, of Councilmember Hall's question was about unclosed-out projects that had remaining allocations in the capital fund. And what I was saying there was that you cannot use those capital allocations for things such as rent for the emergency shelter. But you can use general fund dollars, be they transferred from someplace else or appropriated general fund balance for capital projects if you choose to.
But, but you couldn't appropriate, if some of those projects were finished, you couldn't appropriate that money to be used for something else? That the bud, that the people went into budget for?
Well, the council represents the people. But, but just remember that no, capital funds can only be used for capital projects. That's why they're in a separate dedicated fund for capital projects. But the general fund is more flexible. You can use general fund allocations for capital projects or for ongoing expenses, things like rent for an emergency facility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Petron.
Okay, Mr. Francisco, just to follow up there. I think what Councilmember Studley was trying to say is that under Councilmember Foreman's proposal, the million dollars, that could, it doesn't have to come from, the whole portion doesn't have to come from the general fund. It could come from a capital fund if the projects that the council is proposing here are infrastructure projects. So are there any funds that are available in the capital budget from completed projects that just have leftover money in them? That was, we were supposed to get those lists once a month. Where are we at with that? Because it could be that Councilmember Foreman's idea is partially funded by capital dollars from that list, thereby bringing up some money.
Well, to the extent that the projects that would be identified through the participatory budget process are capital-related projects, then yes, council could transfer funds from any other capital project, active or inactive toward those projects. But my understanding of Councilmember Foreman's proposed amendment was that one million dollars would be a make, would make, they made available for a participatory budget program that might identify capital projects or that might identify projects that would not qualify as capital projects. Therefore, it should be in the general fund. Also, from the standpoint that there were not available funds in the general, in the capital fund to fund that program without eliminating existing capital projects.
Sure, but I mean, I think more doll, you know, I think council's ultimate goal here is to be able to try to reallocate those dollars rather than just having, sitting in a fund from old projects. Can you tell us how much is left? You know, nickel and diming, you know, all of those different accounts, how much money we have to, but sitting there that could potentially be reallocated?
I don't have that readily available, but, but we can certainly generate that. And again.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, because that's something we were hoping to get monthly. So that as we run into these crunches, that we can figure out how to creatively make this work. And perhaps, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Foreman, but maybe she wouldn't object to having a portion of it. If we're talking about them being capital projects anyway, that would free up some of those general fund dollars to go elsewhere rather than considering reducing the amount that would be available for the program. They would just come from different areas. So my next question, and by the way, Councilwoman Foreman, I am supportive of your idea. My question was to the city manager. You had spoken about a Ford F-150 being the responding vehicle. And I'm wondering if that would be fully ADA approved? And can a wheelchair get up in a Ford F-150?
Absolutely not. Right now, when a, a community member is experiencing behavioral health crisis and there is a disability involved, right now, Mstat would most likely transport that individual to either Norman Regional Facility, a Griffin Facility, or Red Rock. So those situations do present themselves currently and transport is managed in those situations through Mstat.
Okay, and from what I heard earlier, it also sounds like that if Mstat transports someone, then we would also need a police officer, even if it's, but not if it's voluntary.
The, that situation happens fairly regularly today. In, in some cases, depending on the state of the individual needing transport, they could be transported with a police officer in the ambulance with them, just depending on the nature of the circumstance. But yeah, I mean, we, we do address individuals with behavioral health needs and disabilities. So that, yeah, that, that hasn't presented a hurdle we could not clear to this point. It is an interesting thought that in the event is that it is a voluntary medical transport that does not require somebody to be restrained that our paramedics have taken more than one trip in the back of an ambulance as well.
Okay, well, I will tell you that my immediate reservation with that, with using Mstat or in a voluntary transfer is, is incredibly expensive on the person being transferred. Where any other city vehicle is free. We're not going to charge someone to go in, well, you are in a different kind of charge in a police, police vehicle. But bill, I'll put a bill someone to go in the F-150, but you can't get an ADA, you know, it's not ADA accessible. So I, I think we haven't gotten there yet on this. I, I appreciate the creative thinking, but it sounds to me like we're definitely going to need that list of capital dollars available, because I still think we're going to need to budget for a mobile crisis sprinter van or something similar that is fully ADA accessible so that we're not sending a, one of our community members in the most vulnerable situation a massive bill to get the help that they voluntarily ask for. So that's it for right now. I just, it sounds like we still have some, some areas we need to focus on before this is going to be ready. So, and then if we, on these amendments, mayor, if we want some things pulled off of consent, we just send that email to the city manager, correct? All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Foreman.
So I am the eternal optimist. And so, Mr. Daryl Pyle, this is for you. So let's just say council is madly in love with one million dollars of general fund money. We take this to the streets, the public gives us back, this is what we want. If we identify any of those funds for any of those projects as capital or that we could use the ARP money for, could we just make like an amendment and allocate that particular? So we're going to stay a million out of the general, we're going to hope for less, but we can absolutely do that.
Absolutely, you can do that. And yeah, over time, as ARP dollars make themselves available and/or infrastructure dollars become available, we think that several of those conversations will transpire, no doubt.
Excellent.
There, there will be no need to email the city manager. Mayor, I was just making a comment, there's no need to email the city manager about pulling one of the amendments off consent, because they will all be off consent as the, adopting the budget is part of a, a public hearing process.
And are, were we voting one by one, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I don't want to get into the city attorney's area here, but I would just remind council to, to try to state whatever amendments you want to have at this meeting and so that they can get on that list. It's a delicate balancing act with that. Outstanding legal matter.
Anthony, your trigger finger is just faster than mine. Ready to do the same thing. Absolutely. We want to get all these amendments in and post them with the agenda on Friday so the public has notice and, and this is not an issue again for us. It's really important that we, we do that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Funding the emergency shelter is it?
Councilmember Studley.
What, I'm sorry, I thought Lee Hall was saying something. I apologize.
Oh, that funding the emergency shelter is it for me. There's nothing else cooking.
I, I support that a hundred percent, as, as I'm sure many of you know. But I, I just want to verify, Mr. Francisco, what is the exact number again from twenty twenty-one that was allocated to community outreach?
Six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Petron.
Okay, so on the, let me get some clarification. Sorry, camera's super dark. I'm sorry. But let me get some clarification. Other than the written amendments that are there tonight, Brenda, thank you, Kaylee. Many things have been discussed tonight. So are, is staff just kind of taking notes of all the different ideas and they will be reduced to amendment form?
That is what, yes, that's why Anthony's asking for all of them tonight. So all the ones that were asked for will be drafted in the list and they will be voted on separately.
Okay, so everything from an ADA-accessible sprinter van to the funding of stormwater projects. I mean, everything has been mentioned tonight. It will be reduced into a, an amendment for us to discuss.
Well, not necessarily the sprinter van and all that, because that's not a budget item right now. The stormwater projects, as it relates to those items that were mentioned and under number eight and the additional funding for the engineering design on the other project, those will be in there, but not just all the general discussion. I mean, you have to have a motion with an actual dollar amount to be in order to make a motion.
Right, but we can't make motions here. That's why I'm trying to get clarifications.
Yeah, the, the appropriations for the six hundred thirty thousand, three twenty-one will be an amendment listed as the Mobile Crisis Response Unit, as well as the.
I want to make sure the number is clear, because I understood Councilmember Studley, her amendment was five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I, I have two parts and I was going to send an email. So the first part is that the six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars that was allocated from twenty twenty-one, I would like to propose a resolution for an appropriation for that be used for a mobile recrise, a mobile crisis response unit. And I would like to take an additional five hundred thousand dollars from the proposed police budget and also put that towards a mobile crisis, mobile crisis response unit. So there's two parts to that.
And I would like an ADA-accessible van that can take our community member to need to use their wheelchair, so we're not filling them when they might be.
My hope is if we get close to a million dollars, Allison, that we can do that with the pilot program. If we have one point one million dollars, we could use that money to do all these things.
Yeah, so you think that'll be enough to also purchase the van or do we need extra? Is what I'm trying to say. I'm happy to add an extra two hundred thousand from the capital budget or from the list of old projects that still have money sitting in them to fund the van as well.
I don't believe those vehicles cost anywhere north of, of what would be appropriated with these two motions.
Yeah, I think that, I think in Eugene, the Kahoots model shows that they fund, I believe, three vans and it's around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year.
Okay. I trust your research on this, because I have not done it, but. Okay, so, but we will know what that number is by next week, Mr. Francisco, on what extra money might be available from old projects. Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, I muted myself.
And I also.
I would.
Sorry, go ahead.
Staff is informing me that they're fairly certain that the inactive project allocations are less than the negative in the available projects figure. So they don't think that there would be enough available to, to fund this van or anything else out of the capital fund without cutting some other project. Now, that is not to say that council can't cut another project or, or transfer money. But, but, but there are more funds available in the general fund than the capital fund.
Understood, but we'll know what that actual dollar is by next week, I assume. And then I also, in my. And then I also, in my last comment, I completely forgot to let Councilmember Hall know that I'm absolutely supportive as well.
Just a reminder, we do have ARP funds coming. They're here. Just want to remind everyone about that. Specifically designed to help us recover in a variety of different infrastructure ways.
I do think that it's probably important to point out that if you do want to spend some ARP funds on. Our unhoused friends, might want to do that pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Just wanted a clarification from Mr. Pyle and Mr. Francisco. Because I did send an email late this afternoon outlining. The request for the funding for the emergency shelter. So do you need anything else from me or do you have what you need?
We are in receipt, that is what we needed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'm glad we tackled a lot of these items tonight as opposed to Tuesday. So lots going on there. Thank you, staff, for doing your best to take notes. Councilwoman Nash, you haven't said a word. Do you have anything you want to contribute this evening?
Actually, I've been thinking about that grant that was rejected in October. For twenty-six thousand to the police department for a combination of things, data presentation. Defensive and protective gear, riot gear. Teleconference and AV equipment, and it also had about sixty-eight special conditions attached to it. Would it be possible to. Set aside at minimum six thousand for the data presentation software? Currently, the Norman Police Department, they, they make data available to the public. In accordance with PDI standards. Everything from uses of force, complaints and inquiries, police contacts. But it's presented in a raw format, facilitated analysis by researchers who can. Use a variety of analytical tools to evaluate the data. But that doesn't make it presentable to the common person, the common community member. And part of that grant that was rejected in October was for. The software that would be able to present this data and this information to the community so that it could be. So that ultimately that, that information be accessible, digestible and convertible into knowledge. And. Right now, the way it is. The community is somewhat reliant on a handful of. Experts to, to condense that information and present it for them. And as recently as a couple of months ago. That's been used to, it's been exploited to manipulate the community by misrepresenting the data. Yeah, I think this software. Is. It's probably the best six thousand bucks we could spend. I think even Councilmember Studley can get behind. Providing the funds for this, because with it, you can, you know, the, the regular citizen can. See the outcomes of our police efforts and our police force. In addition to that, then the defensive. The riot gear, the protective gear. And that's incredibly important. I think the night that, that we're discussing that grant, I pointed out that. The atrocities that we see across the country. It's, they all have one thing in common, the officer felt vulnerable. And he had to escalate to deadly force to, to meet a threat. Defensive gear. Make them feel a little bit safer, a little less apt to escalate up to deadly force. And I've seen the police department's current riot gear. I think Chief Foster said it was procured in the eighties. I don't see why we shouldn't allocate twenty-three thousand, just the amount that, that grant was initially for. Minus the three thousand that was supposed to be passed through to the county. For that defensive gear, for that, that data presentation software. And I think there's telecommunication equipment, whatever. Whatever that would do for the, the department. But that's pretty much the one and only proposal that I had to. Attach on to it. If it's, if it's even possible, I don't know how, how much leeway we have to dictate to Chief Foster. Make some funds available and you have to spend it on AV equipment and defensive gear. But. If, if we can basically make this grant and that. The purposes that is designed for, available to our police department. Without the thirty-seven pages of special conditions attached to it. I think that would. Probably be pretty useful for the, the police department. Councilmember Studley.
I have nothing, I don't see anything wrong with having that type of, like the six thousand for what you're recommending. But the other money I do have a question about, doesn't the OU Police Department have all that stuff?
They may have stuff for their officers, they don't have enough for our officers.
What, I'm sorry, Foreman, what did you say?
I was just going to say they don't have the jurisdiction either for the city.
Oh, I thought OU PD had state jurisdiction.
I'll let Chief Foster explain.
They do have statewide jurisdiction, but they are. Generally restricted to their campus area. We have agreements with them, MOUs on certain areas that's roads that are adjacent to their location. Where they operate, and we do ask them for assistance when we can't respond to calls, just like the Wood County.
So if you needed riot gear, would OU Police Department be there for you?
They don't have gear for our officers, they, they don't have that.
The, I know they may not have it for your officers, but they do have it within their, they have it. So if they needed to come out to help you, it's available for them to use to come help you.
I'm not sure OU has that, like more police department would.
What about our Cleveland County?
I don't know that Cleveland County has it.
Well, maybe since Cleveland County can do what they want with their own money, this is something that they should help fund as well. I, I, I could see that as being more applicable than having our city do it. Since we're already struggling with funding.
So Councilwoman Nash, I'm gonna read the room on that one, and I'm going to say she's a no on that one. But I appreciate you throwing that out there, but the six grand for software seems.
There we go.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I would just say I would support six thousand for software. I did not want to support the amendment back in October because I really did not see the need for. Crowd controller riot gear. I understand there were concerns about the November election and. Things that might be going on nationwide, but I think we found out that that did not. End up being the case in Norman, and I still do not want to have that type of equipment, really. But I do. I do think it's a good idea to have software that can help. Get better data about what our police department's doing, what they're responding to, how they're responding to it. That can, would allow our residents to understand that information better. And like Councilmember Nash said, less likely that people would be able to manipulate. The information and spread misinformation about what may or may not be going on in Norman when it comes to crime. So if there's, if we can identify six thousand dollars specifically for that purpose, I would be all for that. So data and software upgrades, I think, are benefit to, to everybody.
Data-driven decisions, ain't nothing wrong with that. Okay. Fun twist at the end there. Oh, no, one more hand came up, Councilmember Patron. You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry, it's just sparked my memory, but tell me where we're at with IT employees, this is Booker.
Hello.
Tell me where we're at with, where we've been worried about. Keeping people's stuff safe and whether IT needed more money. With all the threats that have been happening in the country and holding up. Corporations and with ransomware and all that kind of stuff. I just been meaning to ask.
We do have a full-time security specialist onboard in the IT department. That runs systems checks, is up to speed on all of the software tools and techniques. To keep our data safe and backed up as redundantly as we can possibly do. And right now, all I can do is knock on wood to say that we have done. Pretty amazing job in terms of the number of attempted assaults on our system that have been identified and stopped. Mr. Powers, any additional information you can provide us on our IT security front?
I would just mention that, you know, it's just a daily occurrence and we continue to put forth. Budget requests for additional folks as we need them or as we see we do. But, you know, we're, we're still trying to wrap our own minds around it. It's random, it's consistent. And it's something we do every day, so the city manager's correct. And I'm very proud of the efforts of the security team and the, the network administrators. But, you know, we, we've got a lot of work to do education-wise and we continue to do that with our own staff. You guys see some of that sometimes as council members, when you get those random emails from us that look like attacks. We're testing our own population because the city workers, the city people that have access to the network are the biggest. Threat vector, and we try to, to educate everyone in the city staff as much as possible. So, I mean, I appreciate that mention. We will continue to, to look at those things and, and ask for funds as we see the need for them.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from you, I, I know you're doing an excellent job, I'm not questioning your capabilities. But what I'm hearing from you is that you would, you would tell us if you muted us to budget for additional employees. If you felt the need immediately or software systems, I, I'm not going to be able to speak intelligently to this, but. Thank you, okay, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Excellent question, Councilmember Holman.
Just going to mention on that note that. Advice to my colleagues, if you don't already know, the if, if you ever get any email that you think is even remotely questionable. Anytime that's happened to me, I automatically send it to Tim directly and tag Daryl or city manager in it. So just would pass along that piece of advice based on my experience over the years. Is if you even think it might be a little fishy, send it to Tim and let him take a look at it.
Learn to live dangerously.
Did not expect Councilmember Nash to say that, okay, well. I know. Oh, and, and my AirPods just died, can you hear me? Okay, AirPods are dead, meeting is over. I will see you all on Tuesday, good night.